Very good. Good morning, welcome to the Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, June 3rd. Also, of course, Election Day, so if you haven't been to the polls, you have until 8:00 tonight. So with that, we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Grimm.
President.
Excuse me. Supervisor Horsley.
Here.
Supervisor Slocum.
Here.
Supervisor Tissier.
Here.
President Pine.
Here. We begin the meeting with public comment as we do with each of our meetings, so this is a time where individuals can speak on an item that's not on the agenda or that is listed on the consent calendar, the county manager's report, or the board members' report. And each person has up to two minutes, and since these aren't on the agenda, we can't have a discussion about them, but we do take comment at this time. So I'll start with Nancy McGee, who actually would like to speak on an agenda item, but she cannot be here for that, so we'll let Nancy come forward now.
Good morning, Mr. President, Supervisors, Mr. Malphey and Mr. Byers. My name is Nancy McGee and I'm here before you this morning on behalf of our County Superintendent of Schools, Ann Campbell. The focus of my comments is to encourage the supervisors to adopt the resolution establishing the San Mateo County Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender and Queer Commission, Agenda Item Number Eight. For several years now, the San Mateo County Office of Education has provided leadership for our county schools to address positive school climate and safe schools. We know that negative attitudes towards LGBTQ people put our youth at increased risk for experiences with violence, including bullying, teasing, harassment, and physical assault. We also know that as a result of these environmental stressors, LGBTQ youth are more likely to have unexcused absences from school, be more susceptible to substance abuse, experience depression, and to report suicidal feelings. As leaders, we know that it is our responsibility to take proactive steps to create and sustain safe school environments and to dedicate ourselves to the positive development of youth in our community. That's why the County Office of Education promotes such programs as Respect 24/7 and the Coalition for Safe Schools and Communities. And that's why we are excited at the possibility of working side by side with the first county or city commission in the state that focuses on the needs of LGBTQ community and youth. California schools are already bound by such recent legislation as SB 48, the Fair Education Act, that requires schools to integrate factual information about the role and contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender persons. Additionally, AB 1266 that became law this past January 1st requires that a student be permitted to participate in sex segregated school programs and facilities, including athletic teams and competitions, consistent with his or her gender identity regardless of the gender listed on the pupil's records.
Nancy, if I could have you just wrap up.
These laws represent a positive way forward for our youth. The existence of a county commission dedicated to addressing these issues is something that we're very excited about, and we encourage you to adopt the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks for making time to join us this morning and fitting that into your schedule. Our next speaker is Jim Tucker and Robert Bernardo.
Good morning, President Pine, Supervisors. I'm Robert Bernardo, and it's my pleasure to serve as the President of the San Mateo County Harbor Commission, and I'm here today with Jim Tucker, who is the immediate past President of the Harbor Commission. And today what we'd like to do is give you just a brief overview of some of the things that we've done recently in terms of our accomplishments. As you know, as Commissioners, we are responsible primarily for the fiscal, environmental, and operational policy for the San Mateo County Harbor District, and that's the two public harbors, one at Pillar Point, located near Half Moon Bay, and one at Oyster Point Marina in South San Francisco. Pillar Point is probably best known for its commercial fishing operations as well as the international surfing competition Mavericks Invitational. And in South San Francisco, Oyster Point is known for its leisure boating facilities as well as a new commuter ferry that connects South San Francisco to the East Bay. And right now, I'm going to hand it over to Commissioner Tucker, who will talk to you a little bit about some of the things we've done this year.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, thank you. Just briefly, three items. Recently, we received the Clean Marina Award, which is a very competitive award statewide that deals with environmental issues and how you handle them, and issues of sustainability. We're very pleased with that. Most recently, we received an award from the Port Captain's Association for having accomplished 1,000 search and rescues from our little district. It's very, very strong. It speaks to the men and women that work for us and their education and training, and we're very pleased with that. Lastly, when I was first elected to the commission, we had something like, that was 16 years ago, and we were $19 million in debt from having borrowed money from the State of California Department of Boating and Waterways with no way to pay it back for infrastructure costs and upgrades. Now, today, as I, and I'm surmising, today, as I finish up, when we make our payment this year, we will owe 5.8 million. So in 10, 12 years, we've come from $19 million in debt down to 5.8. We'll make our final payment in the year 2017, which will be one year ahead of schedule. So we're very pleased with that, and we want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Martin Fox.
Good morning, President Pine, Members of the Board, my fellow veterans Supervisor Slocum and Mr. Malphey, and County Councilman Mr. Byers. Thank you for your service to the county, including your service to those residents living with serious mental illness who are insight deficient and cannot advocate for services that will restore their freedom to associate with their families because they are living on the streets, hospitalized, incarcerated, or dead, like Edgar Arastado and Errol Chang. Laura's Law Assisted Outpatient Treatment produces positive outcomes, and admissible scientific evidence of those positive outcomes was examined by the United States Department of Justice before it certified assisted outpatient treatment as an effective economic and humane hospitalization and incarceration recidivism reduction program in March of 2012. Laura's Law is a needs-based solution for families of persons living with untreated mental illness who are residing with them, as well as our law enforcement officers. It provides treatment before the kind of tragedy Errol Chang's mother Christine, father Thomas, and brother Matt witnessed in Pacifica on March 18th. That tragedy and the more recent murders in Isla Vista will be repeated again and again as long as public mental health systems, who worship the intellectually and morally bankrupt Lanterman Petrus Short Act in HIPAA, like our San Mateo County health systems does, continues to use the brutality of the street to modify the behavior of persons who are least able to defend themselves and resist the treatment they need. Persons living with mental illness who are insight deficient need the incentive Laura's Law provides to help them truly recover because it provides access to treatment based on their need, not the threat their untreated mental illness presents. The health systems intellectually and morally bankrupt threat-based policies and procedures have produced at least 10 deaths and serious injuries in the last 10 years, including the death of a law enforcement officer. It is time to say, not one more Errol Chang, not one more law enforcement officer. Please vote to implement Laura's Law.
Our next speaker would be Roger Medler.
Hi, I'd like to endorse Michael Stogner and Juan Lopez, for one thing, and I know this is not in your jurisdiction, and I know you probably really don't even care, but I have some documents for you to go over, and I'd like to let you know that you said we had to go to our city to get the laws enforced, and we couldn't come to you. So I did go to City Manager, and the City Manager says business of Sea View Tire and Brake supposedly can be in operation without a certificate of occupancy. That is not true. Also, if it didn't have a certificate of occupancy, it has to meet the violations of noise, front parking lot lifts, front alignment, parcel, working off the parcel end expansion of the business. I have clearly have, the staff report, in 1987, the staff report clearly mentions that the business does not have a certificate of occupancy or no final approval. The City Manager refuses to talk to us any further on the matter. I also have a ridiculous letter from Mr. Silberman as an insult, and I'd like to show you, it'll be in the documents. Thank you very much.
And our final public comment speaker is Therese Dyer.
Good morning, County Supervisors and Staff. Since today is Election Day, I'd like to read an excerpt from the Half Moon Bay Review endorsing Don Horsley, but says this about the challenger. "A quick word about the challenger. We would use, we could use many more Michael Stogners. He cares deeply about his community and continues to run for public office against long odds. He stands up for whistleblowers in government and is never afraid to question authority. We think he's more effective as an outsider holding politicians' feet to the fire when we would be working with a system that he's thoroughly lambasted. Stogner is a good man, but he's not the right man for the position. The man is Don Horsley," which I disagree. He's been an outsider fighting for the last 14 years for victims advocates, and I think it's his chance to be the insider, so please vote for Michael Stogner. Also, put a write-in for Greg Monks and Wagstaff. They're write-in candidates, so put either one of the challengers in, because according to Wagstaff, who refused to investigate my fraud case, he said, "If there is an indication of a state law being broken, we will handle the case." Well, he's never handled mine, and I don't think he has any intentions to. So I would say on Election Day, vote for Michael Stogner and Juan Lopez. Thank you.
All right, that will conclude our public comment.
Mr. President, if I may just interrupt and just make a, provide a quick response to Mr. Medler's public comments, just because he seems to come up every two weeks and repeat the same theme. And I can assure you, my office has been very responsive to Mr. Medler. We've exchanged numerous emails over the past few months, trying to understand the full scope of his concerns to see how Weza County can assist, because that's why we're here, to assist the public. And ultimately, as we concluded in a pretty lengthy email to Mr. Medler, his issues are really land use and police power issues that are, fall squarely within the jurisdiction of the city of Pacifica. So, you know, put more simply, the county of San Mateo just doesn't have the authority to deal with his issues, given the nature of his issues. Those are city of Pacifica issues, and we've indicated that in email to Mr. Medler, there's really nothing that this board or the county can help him with, given, again, given the, sort of the nature of the issues he's presenting. So wanted to let you know that, that's kind of where we're at.
Okay, thank you for those comments. I think we had a sense for that, but it's good to be, for the audience to hear it as well. So now it is time to set the agenda and approve the consent items. I would actually, I'd like to move, number three is the presentation for the Pride Month, and I think it would make sense to do that concurrent with number eight, when we consider the new commission. So I'd like to move that over, consider that after item eight. Any other changes to the consent counter?
I'll move to set the agenda and to approve the consent agenda items and make that change of timing.
Thank you. Moved in second, it all in favor? Aye. Very good. So we'll move into our presentations and awards, and we start with the Employee of the Month, Mr. Malphey.
Mr. President, Members of the Board, it's a pleasure to present to you and our audience this morning our Employee of the Month for June 2014, Brian Albini. Brian, would you please stand?
Brian is a senior graphics specialist in the Planning and Building Department. He started working for the county in 2010, and in 2012 was promoted to his present position. Recently, Brian's expertise in graphics and planning was critical in the success of the North Fair Oaks Community Meeting. He has become a key member of the North Fair Oaks Forward Outreach Team, which was challenged to educate the community about redesign options for Middlefield Road and getting community feedback, and you will be hearing more about that later. Brian's outstanding creativity sparked the sandbox idea of utilizing an interactive 3D model with movable pieces to demonstrate the various scenarios of the Middlefield Road design. He developed presentation boards and an interactive streetscape model that helped community residents understand both options and constraints for the redesign. The graphics helped residents become informed voters when they were asked to select their preferred alternative. In addition to his graphic skills, Brian also served as a key bilingual presenter at meetings and staffed a station and assisted Spanish-speaking guests. Our county is indeed fortunate to have Brian Albini as one of its outstanding employees. We have two speakers this morning, Mr. President. The first is Peggy Jensen.
Good morning, President Pine, Members of the Board, Mr. Malphey and Mr. Byers. My name is Peggy Jensen, I'm Deputy County Manager, and I am here this morning speaking on behalf of our North Fair Oaks Forward Outreach Team. Lalela Desma, Pat Brown, Ashley Quintana, and Ellie Dahlman and I have had the pleasure of working with Brian, as Mr. Malphey said, on our North Fair Oaks outreach projects. We decided unanimously to submit Brian's name for Employee of the Month after he prepared all the 12 interactive posters, and as you can see before you, our interactive sandbox that allowed residents of the North Fair Oaks community to really see what the options were for their street redesign. One of our challenges on Middlefield Road is that everyone wants everything. They want wider sidewalks, they want bike lanes, they want wider driving lanes, and they want as much parking as possible. And when you play with a sandbox, what you realize is that there are some constraints, and it was a very visual and clear way for people to understand that. It was a very creative solution to conveying a very complex problem to the community. In addition to being, as John mentioned, in addition to being our graphic designer and builder, Brian also is bilingual. He attended all of our meetings, was a very important member of our team, working with the community. As John mentioned, you will also see more examples of Brian's good work on the presentation we have later this morning on the Middlefield Road survey results and community outreach results. Two of the posters in front of you are examples of Brian's very creative design use in a way of presenting complex information in a very simple way. The infographic on this side shows, provides you a clear summary of the over 500 comments that we had, and then the map on the other side is a very clever and clear way of showing the next steps in our project. So with that, I'd like to thank Brian for all the work he's done for us. I'd also like to mention that we are very grateful for his flexibility. We often ask for last-minute changes. We ask for things, large projects, large posters, to be prepared on short notice, and he was always extremely accommodating. So it's been our pleasure to work with Brian, and we look forward to our continued work on this important project. Now I'd like to introduce Jim Egomire, because Brian's work on the Middlefield Road project is only part of his many duties for planning and building.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen. Good morning, President Pine, Members of the Board, Mr. Malphey and Mr. Byers. My name is Jim Egomire, and I'm the Community Development Director for the Planning and Building Department. What a pleasure to be here today to honor and recognize the talent of one of the Planning Building Department's staff as the county's Employee of the Month, Brian Albini. As you've heard, the specific recent efforts by Brian for the North Fair Oaks Forward efforts, I want to share with you some of Brian's qualities that make him a team player he is for the Planning and Building Department. First, as Mr. Malphey noted, Brian is our department's Senior Graphic Specialist. Brian joined the county and the department back in September 2010 and is part of a three-member IT support team for the department. Almost everything graphically the department publishes is a result of Brian's efforts. This includes our website, our graphics for presentations to your board, the Planning Commission, zoning hearing officer, and all our graphics for all of our staff reports, presentation materials for workshops, and meetings with the public. Brian is also very hardworking and innovative. A number of items come to mind, but one in particular that stands out for me is the graphics process streamlining that he has provided staff to make the publication of materials using master slide templates for their reports faster, easier, and more efficient than before Brian started with us four years ago. Knowing just who the customer is, is another quality I want to highlight this morning. Whether staff, your board, the Planning Commission, the public, Brian gets it. Brian has a degree in planning, and with that background and his experience, he has an eye to what his customer needs in our line of work. And last, Brian has a very positive attitude and work ethic. I can come to him with any request, and he always closes our conversation with, "Sure, I can do that." Brian is committed to our team, our team to every, to help everyone succeed. I know this is a very special day and time for Brian, as he has asked his family to join him here today in the celebration and recognition. So, thank you Supervisors for your show of appreciation today, and Brian, from all the staff with PNB, thank you for all your help and what you do. We appreciate your contributions and the caliber of your efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen and Mr. Egomire. Brian, we have a commendation from the board and a small gift, so if you'd like to come up, along with your family, they're welcome as well, and we are fortunate to have you helping us with all your many skills. So Supervisor Grimm, would you like to join me? Yeah. (applause).
Mr. President, can I just thank Brian?
Of course.
For a moment. Brian, thank you for bringing your family here. I know that in the future you'll look back on this picture with fond memories, but let me just say that I'm a real lover of good graphic design, but at the same time, I'm a harsh critic of graphic design. And I just wanted to personally thank you and tell you how awesome those graphics are, and how much a difference they made, I think, at the community meetings, because they took a complex subject and really made it, as Peggy said, quite easy to understand. So thank you for your thoughtfulness, thank you for your hard work, and thank you for the last-minute flexibility on those little changes that we all make from time to time. Thank you.
All right, great. That puts us all on a very good move. We will now move to a presentation of the annual report by the Youth Commission. Supervisor Grimm.
Thank you, President Pine. It's really my honor to have introduced this item. It's, we have a youth commission in this county that is active, engaged, creative, collaborative, as well as many of them sit on our boards and commissions and actually cast votes, helping to decide the fate of issues in this county, and they take that so seriously and so intensely that sometimes, we always worry that we're putting too much work on them and they're not spending enough time at school, but they're all, they're all perfect students as well. So let me introduce those that are here today and are going to give you the annual report, the two co-chairs, Amir Amerian and Felipe Afanador, and they are joined by Araceli Effigino and Maxwell Weinstein, who is next year's Chair of the Youth Commission. And I think, are you being joined by Henry and Bryce this morning? Henry Rule is here also. So you all want to come forward? And Brooke Costello from Star Vista is also here.
Thank you.
They work hard.
Good morning, President Pine and Board. We'd like to start off by thanking you for your time, and we just want to go over a few of the accomplishments and of the things we have done this past year. So the mission statement of the Youth Commission is to really address the issues affecting youth in San Mateo County, and to do this by bridging the gap between youth and adult perspectives. And all of this is done by placing the youth commissioners in committees within the commission and on boards and commissions, as Supervisor Grimm said. And this is, has been a great experience, and it really allows youth to get more involved in local government and to further understand the works done by other commissions. And everyone has had a fantastic experience and really gets to know how much work and effort goes into the great projects that the commissions do. In addition, the youth commissioners have the opportunity of doing individual projects to further delve into the work of the commissions and boards, and it allows some boards and commissions to even gain more knowledge on issues that they were previously interested in. So this past year, some of our priorities, as always, are to represent the youth in the county, but part of what makes the Youth Commission so remarkable is that it really provides leadership training for youth commissioners, and it allows them to gain more knowledge and experience in public speaking and organization skills and communication skills, and that's something that we really strive to gain in every single youth commissioner, and that's something that has been obtained this past year. In addition, we've been able to foster positive adult and youth relationships through the boards and commissions and through different interactions with other commissions. The commission is comprised of 25 youth from around the county, and their ages range from 13 to 20. And this year, we've been lucky to have representation from all five districts, as well as 17 different high schools, and we really strive in our application process and in the process of finding new youth commissioners to really continue to have a diverse range of opinions, ethnicities, socioeconomic backgrounds, and this allows us to truly represent our constituents. And now we'll be moving on to our five different committees and what they've been working on this year.
All right, hi everyone, I'm Max Weinstein. This past year, I had the pleasure of being the Chair of the Adolescent Needs Committee, and our job this year was to release the 2014 Adolescent Needs Report. It was the culmination of a five-year cycle from other committees, but we had the credit, the pleasure to finish it off, and you guys were handed it by Brooke this morning, but for the public, it is a comprehensive evaluation of youth needs in our county. I'm not going to go through a full overview of the report, but there is definitely access online to PDF. You can, after the meeting, you can talk to me or talk to Justin from Health or Brooke for access, because I'm limited, we're, they were not online print. So what we did this year was, we cleaned two data sets, one from Survey Monkey, one from Hard Copies, that was around 5,000 in total. Then we analyzed the data. I taught some of the guys on the commission how to run some R code and run two-way table analysis, but then Health and their epidemiologists were really helpful and ran those Chi-square tests that are so important. Then with the help from Moon, of course, she ran the Chi-square test and helped compile the Healthy Kids survey data from California Healthy Kids to supplement the data we had from the county. And Justin also helped with creating policy recommendations from the data that we borrowed from. from previous reports, and we also came up with some of our own. And then the entire Youth Commission voted on these prioritized policy recommendations that I have in the next slide. So I won't go through all of them, but I will highlight a few very important ones. They're all very important since they're prioritized, but these are just five or six of the top policy recommendations. So there was a need for social and emotional learning support. One of the findings was that, it's probably not news, but if you were involved in extracurricular activities after school, there was a significant decrease in the amount of suicidal thoughts from those youth. So I don't know if that's, that's probably well-known, but we're pushing the, we're pushing the issue of having support systems in and after school. So one of the recommendations would provide teachers and administrators with training on social and emotional learning, so they can better support their students' SEL development through role modeling. So giving teachers the opportunity and the tools to actually be positive assets in the school. Not that some aren't already, but maybe standardizing a training process that would help them support the youth. And I also hit on the other one, the quality after-school programs. That's promoting efforts in schools and communities to provide youth with positive experiences and opportunities, such as after-school programs and supportive connections with adults, since we saw that any youth with an adult ally was also, was at less at risk for mental health issues or suicidal thoughts, self-harm. And there's other ones, of course. Some of these are actually pulled from the California Healthy Kids survey and not our data, but all those recommendations are in the report, and they're supported by the data. There's a chart that has, okay, this is the policy, this is the chart to back it up. And just thank you to Dr. Morrow and Justin Watkins and Moon Choi for helping us release the report. We couldn't have done it without them. And thank you for listening to me.
Hello, everyone. So, I'm Henry Rule. I am the chair of the Youth Commission's Environmental Protection Committee. And this year, the Environmental Protection Committee, we took two main projects upon ourselves. The first was to create two teen-built and teen-run community gardens at group homes in San Mateo County, at Your House South and Daybreak. We built these in March, and they were a fantastic success. We received donations of building materials and compost from a couple companies and organizations, and Mike Mill of Star Vista was very invaluable in his help also. So, thank you so much, Mike. And some of the youth actually at Your House South even came out and helped in the building of that one. So that was, that was a fantastic success. We also planned to host our second annual Eco-Friendly Fair this year, but sadly, despite sending out well over 100 emails and phone calls to businesses and organizations throughout the San Francisco Bay Area, we only received nine confirmed yeses to our Eco-Friendly Fair. Last year, we had 18 businesses and four organizations, so we decided to postpone the Eco-Friendly Fair for another year. Part of the problem was the date that we chose, which was probably too late in the season and conflicted with the Treasure Island flea market. Finally, the Environmental Protection Committee is responsible for sending out weekly Eco-Friendly Fire Day challenges over the Youth Commission's Facebook page, which are then distributed to all the youth that we know. And they're, they're just sort of fun, whimsical little challenges that actually are pertinent to people's lives and deal with conserving resources or minimizing environmental impact. They can be things like trying to carpool or walk or bike to school two times a week or take five-minute showers instead of seven-minute showers. That, that's hard for me. Or, or turning down the heat in the winter, just simple little minor lifestyle changes, but they, they can be fun when treated as challenges. And some are surprisingly simple, some are surprisingly difficult, but they've been quite successful and fun, and some other committees of the Youth Commission have also adopted similar challenges. Thank you.
This year, the Immigrant Youth Committee was interested in learning more about the youth that currently are, participate in the juvenile justice system. So, they did this through distribution of a survey, and they collected a total of 77 surveys and were able to learn more about the disproportionality of minorities and more about the experiences of youth in the juvenile justice system. And it was a great experience to be able to finally enact that, that project that wasn't able to be carried out last year. And in addition, they also gave out their annual immigrant youth award, which was selected through a nomination process to an outstanding immigrant youth. And the immigrant youth that were selected were handed a refurbished laptop or a $500 monetary donation to undocumented youth. Overall, it was a great year for the committee to be able to actually do work in, in ideas and concepts that they were interested in, learning more about immigrant youth. So the Legislative Committee this year started by talking about youth voting. And so we discussed how a disproportionate amount of youth eligible to vote do not vote in our city and county elections and also state and national elections. And we wanted to encourage more youth to vote and get out there and participate and use their right to effect change. And so what we decided to do was create a curriculum that government teachers in high schools could use in about a 15-minute session to really encourage voting. And this was meant for government teachers who did not already have a strong curriculum, and we wanted to provide a curriculum that was made by youth and that we know would really get youth excited and interested in voting. Later in the year, we worked with the Adolescent Needs Committee to create the policy recommendations that are entailed in the Adolescent Needs Report. We wanted to combine both committees' skills in order to produce a greater report, so that it gave better recommendations. And lastly, as we always do during the spring, we take a look at what bills are being proposed in Sacramento and looked at which bills are affecting youth. And this year, we're bringing three bills to the Board of Supervisors that we asked to endorse, and all three center around education, making sure that youth without that many resources, such as foster youth and homeless youth, have more resource and have the ability to succeed, and also making sure that our California Community Colleges, state universities, and universities of California are safer and provide a better learning environment for youth. And also, our Teen Stress and Happiness Committee has been focusing on a really important project, and that is reinstating safe rides throughout the county. Safe Rides was a program that used to exist, but now we want to bring it back. Now, if a youth is intoxicated or unable to drive him or herself, we want to make sure that that youth has a safe and free ride back to his or her home, so that they do not put themselves or others in danger and are not barred by financial restrictions. And so, we have been working on, the committee has been working on that, and we are potentially still, still getting figured out, but potentially have secured funding for that project, and we're really excited going into next year, we can start to see that project come to fruition. And also, the committee created a documentary called What Is Normal, and it presented at the Behavioral Health Resource Services Stand Up for Mental Wellness kickoff event. So the committee has been really active in both really creating and promoting services for youth and also advocating for them throughout the county.
So one of the other main functions of youth commissioners is to be youth liaisons to county boards and commissions. This is an optional thing for youth commissioners, but out of the 25 youth commissioners that we have this year, 22 of them are members of boards and commissions. This is the most youth commissioners we've ever had on boards and commissions, and it's, it's been a fantastic experience. We are liaisons to 11 boards and commissions. I personally am a liaison to the Parks Commission, which has been a fantastic experience for me. They're, they're awesome. And they're, they're very welcoming and friendly, and just speaking from my personal experience, I have full rights of address, I can say whatever I want. Usually, I say too much, but they're, they're fine. They're, they're fine with that. I can vote when I want to, and things like that. And I, I think, I think it's a fantastic experience. And then, in turn, I bring a youth perspective to the Parks. I use the Parks quite a bit. A lot of youth use the Parks quite a bit, and so I think it's, it's fantastic that a youth voice can be represented on the Parks Commission. That's, so that's just, that's just a specific example, but overall, that's what youth commissioners are able to do through this program, which I believe is one of the first programs ever to let youth commissioners be members of county boards and commissions. Also, one of the other elements of the liaison program are adult allies, who are commissioners on the commissions that sort of act as mentors and allies and can talk and give advice and support to the, the youth liaisons to the commissions. My adult ally is Mr. Neil Merrily, who's on the Parks Commission, and he has been incredibly helpful. He is, whenever, whenever I've had questions, whenever I've thought I've had questions but haven't known what questions to ask, whenever I've wanted to email him before, talk about things, he, he has been there and he has helped, and he, he is a great, great adult ally. And we have, we have lots of great adult allies. In fact, we had an adult ally award this year. The adult ally who won was Ms. Emily Roberts of the First Five Commission, and we also had an Outstanding Board and Commission Award, which was won by the Peninsula Partnership Leadership Council.
Our largest event this past year was the Youth Conference, which we hosted in late March up in College of San Mateo. It was the Third Annual Youth Conference, and our theme this year revolved around passion and empowerment, so we really wanted to emphasize to youth how important it was to find something that they were truly interested in and that they wanted to get more involved about, and to empower them with opportunities and different ways to get involved in that passion of theirs. We did this through 11 youth-led workshops from a variety of topics. Some of them included like the Ten Commandments of communicating with a person with disabilities, or we also talked about LGBTQ rights and surpassing the gender binary. And overall, through these workshops, youth were able to get a better understanding of some of the topics they might have been interested in, and they also provided with opportunities that they could get further involved in their communities, and they could engage their friends in order to join those interests of theirs. In addition, we had 18 community partners table an event during lunch for more opportunities that youth could get involved locally and in their communities. And overall, we had around 175 attendees, and all the attendees seemed to have a great time and really benefit from the, the conference. And we, the surveys to see how, how well they enjoyed the conference gave great results, and everyone who attended really seemed to get something out of it and seemed to want to come back next year, so that's certainly something we will continue in the future. So as we come to a close, we'd like to welcome and congratulate Maxwell Weinstein as our new chair, and also Henry Rule as our vice chair. And Max is serving as the chair of the Adolescent Needs Committee, and Henry as a chair of the Environmental Protection Committee, and also the other chairs were not able to be here, but Neeti Bandrapalli will be serving as chair of the Teen Stress and Happiness Committee, Kelly Liang will be serving as the chair of the Immigrant Youth Committee, and Mei Mei Tran Moi will be serving as the chair of the Legislative Committee. And we have a really great group of both new and returning chairs of our committees, and we're excited to continue the work and continue having the diverse range of youth on our, on our commission. And as Felipe and I leave, we'd just like to thank the Board of Supervisors for your continued support. Ending my third year on the commission, I've always been surprised and amazed how supportive our adults in our county are of youth. And I, every, experienced that every time I talked to one of Board of Supervisors, any staff in the county, or anytime I walk into a PPLC meeting. It's an amazing support, and it's amazing, you know, love for youth that, you know, surpasses even what I experience in schools and in other activities that I do. And this is incredibly impressive, because these are adults that work with adults every day. So, we'd like to thank you very much for your support, and thank you. Are there any questions?
Amir, thank you, and Felipe for your leadership for the last couple of years, and Max, we wish you the very best for next year. We have 13 of our youth commissioners leaving this year, all going on to new careers, new schools, and so we're gonna, we'll have a big chance for new volunteers and, and new, new people entering this, next year's commission. I just want to thank all of these young gentlemen. They make, I think that they speak, represent this county so well, and they speak so well for the youth of our county, and I want to wish you all the best in your next endeavors.
Thank you. Supervisor Groom, it's truly one of our most impressive commissions, and we're very grateful to all the work you do, Supervisor Groom, to support, support their work.
Can I just make one quick comment, just to let you know how, how much we do value your input, is that there's a particular piece of legislation that was kind of, you know, I was sort of concerned about, so I asked Supervisor Groom, what's the Youth Commission think? And she, she, she gave me your analysis of it, and so I supported that legislation based on your recommendation. So your recommendations make, make a big difference, and we do listen, we learn a lot from you, not just only from, you know, how to use our iPhones and all that stuff. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
If I may, just make one comment. I, I would like you to also consider, as you move on to future endeavors, that there is a life here in public service, so you all could certainly do it.
Thank you. We need you. Very good. Thank you again. Supervisor Tissier, we have a proclamation on Disaster Preparedness Day.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I do have a proclamation for Disaster Preparedness Day for Saturday, June 7th, 2014. This is our 10th annual Disaster Preparedness Day, and we started this back in 2005 after Hurricane Katrina, when a group of people came together, led by, at that point, it was State Senator Jackie Speer. And at the end of the meeting, after we talked about the needs in our county, the only two that were left standing were Don Horsley and myself. So therefore, we had the first annual Disaster Preparedness Day, and we've continued it ever since. And the great part about it is, we, we really encourage families to come, and in the last couple of years, we've had it at the Expo Center, the first day of the fair. And what we do is, we have people come, in the first hour, they get in free to get into the fair and to have free parking. One, it gets them in to have their children and the families be educated about CPR, about CERT programs, and about how to create a disaster preparedness kit. And we think that this annual event has helped to promote the well-being of our residents, especially at a time of a disaster. So, with that, I would like to make a motion to adopt this proclamation. I'd like to present it to Lieutenant Jeff Kernan, who's with the Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services.
May I also second the motion?
Your motion may be seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
On behalf of Sheriff Greg Monks, I'd like to recognize Supervisor Tissier and her staff. I know some of her staff may be present with us today for their leadership in the last 10 years with hosting Preparedness Days. It's, it's very important, not just to us here in government, but also to our community members. The Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services Bureau and Office of Emergency Services have collaboratively, collaboratively worked together with Supervisor Tissier and her staff in hosting several demonstrations and booths designed to, to prepare our community for individual responsibility and preparedness. And we will do that again this Saturday. Like the supervisor said, if you get there early at 10:00 AM, it's free admission. There'll be a lot of giveaways. I think it'll be about 90 degrees out, so it should be a fun day at the kickoff of the county fair. And again, we're, we're looking forward to it, and we're thrilled to be a part of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Martin Fox is asked to speak, and Martin, if you have a comment on Disaster Preparedness Day, you can make that.
Thank you again for your service to the county, President Pine, members of the board. I support any proclamation that reminds local policymakers and residents of the importance of preparing for a disaster that includes preparing for how the seriously mentally ill who are insight deficient may react. The limited number of available inpatient mental health treatment beds are already forcing patients to be placed in facilities outside the county. A disaster is likely to reduce the number of available inpatient beds in the county and impair transporting patients to facilities. On behalf of Sheriff Greg Monks, I'd like to recognize Supervisor Tissier and her staff. I know some of her staff may be present with us today for their leadership in the last 10 years with hosting Preparedness Days. It's very important, not just to us here in government, but also to our community members. The Sheriff's Office of Emergency Services Bureau and Office of Emergency Services have collaboratively worked together with Supervisor Tissier and her staff in hosting several demonstrations and booths designed to prepare our community for individual responsibility and preparedness. And we will do that again this Saturday. Like the supervisor said, if you get there early at 10:00 a.m., it's free admission. There'll be a lot of giveaways. I think it'll be about 90 degrees out, so it should be a fun day at the kickoff of the county fair. And again, we're looking forward to it, and we're thrilled to be a part of this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Martin Fox is asked to speak, and Martin, if you have a comment on Disaster Preparedness Day, you can make that.
Thank you again for your service to the county, President Pine, members of the board. I support any proclamation that reminds local policymakers and residents of the importance of preparing for a disaster that includes preparing for how the seriously mentally ill who are insight deficient may react. The limited number of available inpatient mental health treatment beds are already forcing patients to be placed in facilities outside the county. A disaster is likely to reduce the number of available inpatient beds in the county and impair transporting patients to facilities outside the county. Assisted outpatient treatment would allow patients to remain in the community and not require patients to be transported long distances. Laura's Law should be included in the county's disaster preparedness plan. Thank you.
We'll now move on to North Fair Oaks Forward update. Ms. Jensen?
Good morning again, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Maltby and Mr. Byers. It's my pleasure to present to you an update on our North Fair Oaks project. I'd like to start by reminding you a little bit about North Fair Oaks Forward. The Planning and Building Department, over the past four or five years, worked on a very intensive community plan for North Fair Oaks. That project was called North Fair Oaks Now. Our implementation phase is called North Fair Oaks Forward, and that's an initiative that includes a variety of community-based projects and a number of projects that the county is working on. Some of those projects include the Friendship Park development, which Lilia Desma was very spearheaded for the community, reducing illegal dumping, our North Fair Oaks Library Initiative through Measure A, and also all the work that the health system has done on developing the Community Health Center. But what today I'd like to focus on is the redesign of Middlefield Road. So what this map shows you is the area of Middlefield Road that the project, the redesign is going to be working on. It's from Fifth Avenue to Pacific Avenue. And what I'd like to focus on today is the summary of all the outreach and engagement work that we've been doing. For the past three months, Lilia, Ashley, and Ellie and Pat have been very engaged in the community. We've taken a number of steps to get community input and community feedback on what the folks in the community want to see their community look like. Our outreach efforts have included surveys. We administered surveys at a variety of locations. Not only were people able to pick up surveys at the library, at the health clinic, but Ashley and Ellie and Lilia also went out to the Sequoia Adult School and administered surveys to over 12 classrooms. They went to the Karen Academy, and they also attended events at the churches in the community. In addition to conducting a survey, we had a variety of preliminary meetings with some specific target groups. The picture you see here is with auto body shop owners. We wanted to get their specific comments on the redesign of Middlefield Road. We also met with property owners and a specific group of business owners on Middlefield Road. All of these preliminary meetings resulted in two large community meetings, and I'd like to highlight some of the things that our team did in terms of generating, creating publicity about the outreach, about the community meeting. We sent out postcards to residents throughout the community. We had door hangers that we worked with the youth initiative on hanging door hangers throughout the area. We had newsletters sent out, and we also did email blasts. We were very fortunate at the two meetings that were held, the 26th and the 29th of April, to have over 125 attendees. So when you put all these sources of data together, the respondents to the survey, the attendees of the preliminary meetings, we got responses from over 2,100 residents of North Fair Oaks. There we go. So what I'd like to do is talk a little bit about the survey. We had over 1,300, actually 1,354 responses to our survey. I'd like to point out that 57% were Spanish responses. People responded, completed the survey in Spanish, and 43% were in English. Of the folks that completed those surveys, 79%, almost 80%, were completed in paper, and the balance were completed online. In terms of who took the survey, some of the interesting statistics are that, let's see, do we go? Okay, I'm sorry, let me go back one. In terms of who took the survey, some of the key points are that 54% of the folks were residents. That means there were over 700 residents that completed the survey, and although it only looks like a small percentage took the survey that were business owners, it actually was 81 people, which is a fair number of business owners for that community. In terms of how do you use Middlefield Road, the majority of folks drive on Middlefield Road. Their main source of transportation is their car. And in terms of how they actually, what they do when they're on Middlefield Road, the majority of people, over 50%, over 700 folks, actually shop on Middlefield Road. So they have a very vested interest. The people we were hearing from have a very vested interest in what this part of the, part of Middlefield Road ultimately will look like. So in addition to getting a variety of, getting the surveys back, participating in the community meetings, we also received over 500 specific comments from people who completed the survey and who attended the meeting. Those comments were obtained both in English and in Spanish, and a couple of examples of the comments include, someone wrote, "I would love to see biking, walking, and driving be equally safe on Middlefield Road." Another person said that they would love to see trees and benches along Middlefield Road, make it more attractive. And a third person said that they want a place that's more family-friendly and it's much safer to walk. So our Middlefield Road team, our North Fair Oaks Forward team, took all the information that we gathered, all those 2,100 survey results and comments and 500 comments, and analyzed them. And came up, and after, through that analysis, we found that there were four main themes, and these are ranked in terms of priority, in terms of the number of people that expressed concern or interest in this issue. And those themes were safety, access, creating an attractive Main Street-like space on Middlefield Road, and also creating an active and vibrant location. So in terms of safety, what people said that they would like to improve for pedestrians was adding crosswalks, reducing speed, providing traffic, streetlights, and also having increased lighting on the street. For bikers, what folks said that they would like to see were bike lanes, wider and well-marked bike lanes, and well-delineated bike routes. For people who are driving cars, they felt that there needed to be improvements in visibility, both turning on and off of Middlefield Road. They also felt that parking should be more accessible and easier to access, and they also, there was also a lot of interest in parallel parking, because folks felt that that would be safer if you're going to add bicycle lanes to the road, that it's easier to see people when you're leaving or parking in parallel parking than if you're backing out from a diagonal parking spot. So the second area that people were concerned about or had a lot of comments on related to access, how do you get to Middlefield Road, and how do you, how do you get to Middlefield Road, and what are you doing when you get there? So for pedestrians, the issues circled around having wider sidewalks, more signage for pedestrian crossing, making it easier for people to cross the street and safer to cross the street. And there are also a number of comments about cleanliness. In addition to have, the request to have more trash cans, and potentially trash cans that provide recycling possibilities, too. For bicyclists, there was a desire to have bike racks, an easy place to, if you were going to invite bikers to use Middlefield Road, a place where they could safely park their bikes. And for drivers, there was a lot of comment about insufficient street parking, and insufficient parking in the entire area. Many people talked about how they felt there should be some sort of parking lot or parking garage, because there isn't enough parking on-street. There were comments about enforcing time-limited parking, although there wasn't much interest in having pay for parking, and there were also some folks who mentioned the need to have handicap parking spaces. So the third area of interest was creating an attractive and main, attractive Main Street-like area along Middlefield Road. And some of the suggestions from the folks were creating a streetscape that included benches, that included trees, that had public art, potentially some public, some small gardens or community gardens along the streets. Another point that came up was the fact that people didn't like billboards in the Middlefield Road area. They would like to either reduce or eliminate billboards. Cleanliness was another, was also mentioned frequently. People wanted, talked about, again, having street maintenance programs, potentially creating a business improvement district, and also adding, as I mentioned before, street trash receptacles along the street. I'm sorry, this is a new program, and we're still getting used to it, but we'll figure it out. So for zoning and building design, again, billboards. There was talk about having mixed use along Middlefield Road, having commercial structures on the first floor with, with family, with residential on the second floor as the street evolves over time potentially. Business regulation, trying to get a certain type of business in there, a good mix of businesses, but businesses that are more focused on a commercial and downtown type of area. And the final area of concern, a final section of recommendations had to do with making Middlefield Road an active and vibrant area. There's a lot of talk about adding some sort of community plaza. Everybody loves the plaza in front of the courthouse here in Redwood City, and they want to have a place where community cultural events could be held in the North Fair Oaks area. Talk about farmers' markets, better access to fruit and produce. So that's what people had to say about Middlefield Road. But the key question, and the first thing we need to decide before we actually do this dine, is how many lanes is Middlefield Road going to have? Is it going to be three lanes with a center turn lane, shared center turn lane, or is it going to be four lanes that they currently have with two traffic lanes in each direction? And even though we got lots and lots of comments back from folks, and a lot of people voted, the fact is there was no consensus. 49% of those 2,100 people said they wanted three lanes. 41% said they wanted four lanes, and 10% had no opinion. So what that means is that we have some more work to do. So the next steps we're going to outline on the map. On the 22nd of May, we went and gave the same presentation to the North Fair Oaks Community Council. So the folks that are most engaged are the residents and the people that represent that neighborhood are aware of the results of our study. And today, we are presenting to you the results of this. So the next step throughout the month of June, a couple of things are going to be going on. We have 16 scheduled meetings with a variety of community groups, including elected officials in Atherton, Menlo Park, and Redwood City, the school boards, both the elementary and the high school district in Redwood City, church groups, youth groups, and a variety of other community groups, to present the same information, to show them that, here's what we heard from you, and we're listening to what you said, and here are the next steps we're going to take based upon the input that you've provided to us. So in addition to how, in June, to having those community meetings, the Department of Public Works is going to be doing intensive traffic analysis. They're going to be looking at the three-lane option and the four-lane option, and what the impacts will be on traffic along Middlefield Road, and also what the impacts will be on the side streets and the people who live adjacent to Middlefield Road. That analysis will be presented at a study session of the North Fair Oaks Community Council on July 17. And then the following week, at their regular meeting, the Community Council will host a community-wide meeting where the results of that traffic analysis will be presented. On the 28th of August, at their next regularly scheduled meeting, the North Fair Oaks Community Council will be assessing all of the information they had and making a recommendation on the street designed for Middlefield Road. On the 23rd of September, we will host a community meeting. The council will host a community meeting to provide feedback on what the council has recommended, and then the council will be coming to your board meeting on the 21st of October to present their recommendation for design. And once a design has been approved, we anticipate, and this is just preliminary, but we anticipate it'll probably take three to, or four to five years to do all the design work and all the construction. Now, the next steps in the process will be, once a street design has been determined, whether it's three lanes or four lanes, and the width of the sidewalks, the Department of Public Works will prepare detailed designs. And as soon as they have that initial set of designs developed, those designs will be given to PG&E, because the very first step in this project is undergrounding the utilities. That's a very complicated project, because not only do they have to work with all the property owners, they have to work with the cable company, they have to work with the utilities, they have to work with the lighting district to coordinate putting all the lines that are currently on the poles underground. While PG&E is doing that work, or doing the utility undergrounding, the final design work will be done by Public Works, and then they will be preparing the bid documents, coming back to your board to award the bid, and then construction will begin. So as I said, we don't know at this point exactly how long that's going to take, but our initial estimates are four to five years. What will be occurring, though, will be a lot of work going on during that time, so people will see the progress is being made. So that concludes our presentation. Although one other thing I'd like to share with you, if you'll see at the bottom of this slide, there is a web address, nfoforward.org. Supervisor Slocum's staff, with the assistance of Lilia and Ashley, have prepared that, have worked on that website, which is in both English and in Spanish. All the results, all the data from the surveys, all the community comments will be all posted for anyone to review on that website. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Jensen.
First of all, thank you, Mr. President. Let me ask Pat Brown, Lilia Desma, Ellie Dolman, and Ashley Quintana to go over to the microphone. I know we hadn't planned this, but I want you to be recognized for all of your hard work, and maybe you could just introduce yourself to the board, and thank you so much for everything that you've done.
Hi, my name is Ashley Quintana, and I'm very happy to be part of the NFO outreach team, so thank you. I don't know. Supervisor Slocum, do you want me to say anything else?
That's good. A lot of work to do.
Hi, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you. My name is Ellie Dolman, also part of the outreach team.
Good morning. My name is Lilia Desma, and I have been working on this project for probably a year and a half, and I must say that this is one of the most rewarding projects I've been a part of. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank you for the opportunity, as a culminating activity in my career, to be part of this project. I was part of the planning process for the community plan in North Fair Oaks, and it's really been a pleasure to work with this team as we're helping to inform and engage the community about what's coming up next. So thank you.
So that's the North Fair Oaks Forward Community Outreach Team, and they've just done an amazing job with these community meetings. Even County Manager Maltby surprisingly showed up at one, I suspect to see about a return on his investment for this outreach work, but thank you, thank you, John, for coming to that community meeting. And in addition to the team that you see here today, there are quite a few people, and I'm not going to read all their names, but the building and planning folks, you met Brian earlier, have been instrumental. The Arts Working Group, the Parks folks, the health staff, all the facilities people, like Terry Chin at the Fair Oaks Community Center, who opened their doors and welcomed us. A big shout-out to all of them. And I just think that one of the things that I heard early on was, well, and you all have heard this too, but, well, we never heard about the community plan. We weren't part of that process. We never this, we never that. And I feel very confident about our efforts this time around with the Middlefield redesign and the whole North Fair Oaks Forward, that we've really done this outreach work correctly, and we've really engaged the community. And one of the most impressive things, I think, that's a credit to Ellie and Ashley is the fact that we got, and Pat, and of course, Lilia, is that we got so many Spanish responses. Because that's a very difficult community to engage, and I really believe that they were a part of this process, and their voices were heard and will be heard. And also, just one last thing, I don't know if you've had a chance yet to visit Friendship Park in North Fair Oaks, but I was there yesterday or the day before. Actually, that's not true. It was Saturday on the cleanup day, and we stopped to look at the condition of the park, and there were kids playing, and parents there, and the community garden was growing. There were tomatoes all over, and that was a direct result of Lilia Desma's work in Rotary and Shutterfly and a lot of other folks, but people are actually using that park now, and it's just, it was just so rewarding for me to see the kids playing on the jungle gym or whatever we call that these days. So, team, you've done an awesome job. Thank you to the County Manager's Office for your support, and Peggy Jensen, thank you for your leadership. As Peggy mentioned, we're going to be doing a lot of meetings in June and July with city councils and school districts, and in addition to that, I extended an invitation to mayors and city managers, actually, to have one-on-one meetings with them in case there were things that they wanted to discuss in a different sort of venue, and so we'll be, I'll be doing that also. So I think as a result of all the effort that we've put into here, we can all be proud of the fact that this outreach team really did things fundamentally different, and they all ought to be proud, and thank you for your work. It's valued. Shout-out.
All right, great update and great outreach. So our last item in the Presentations Awards at this point is the presentation and commendations to employees who assisted in enrolling San Mateo County residents in the Affordable Care Act. Turn that over to County Manager Maltby, and after we recognize these folks, we will take a brief break to have a little reception in the foyer, so. will take a, a brief, uh, a break to have a, a little, a reception in the foyer, so.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, and members of the board. I'm excited and pleased this morning to recognize members of our Health System Human Services Agency, Health Plan of San Mateo, and community-based organizations who have helped county residents enroll in the new Affordable Care Act health insurance coverage during this first-in-history open enrollment period. As we previously reported to the board, more than 42,000 residents of San Mateo County now have health insurance since open enrollment began on October 1st, 2013. This includes 27,000 enrolled in private plans through Covered California and another 15,000 in Medi-Cal through the Health Plan of San Mateo. Despite all the technological challenges and delayed response times at the state level, overall, San Mateo County enrollments have met or exceeded targets set by the state, Covered California, and our own internal goals. I especially want to thank everyone for their tireless efforts to conduct outreach and enrollment activities that took place all the way to the end of the enrollment period, and this included extended office hours at HSA regional offices, clinic locations, local congregations, and community events, and keeping the doors open for thousands of residents who showed up to enroll on March 31st. While more work remains to address technology and other issues that keep us from achieving optical effectiveness, I know that all of you will continue to advocate for improvements that can help make the next open enrollment period better for our residents. This morning, we have commendations for 20 staff members who are present, and as I call your names, if each of you could please come forward to receive your commendation as your name is called, and remain in the front of the dais for a group photo with the board. Then, Mr. President, as you have indicated, uh, there will be a brief recess, uh, in the, to the lobby, uh, for a reception, and all audience members, uh, and the public are invited. Without any further ado, uh, let me begin. Stefan Luise, Marmy Bermudas, Anna Gonzalez, Claudia Lopez, Catalina Martinez, Mirabel Prado, Gia Ren, Srija Srinivasan, Ed Carrickson, Lorena Gonzalez, Alberto Fernandez, Betty Wang. Not present, but a special thanks to our Human Service District Offices, and I know they're watching today on the, uh, live feed, so a special shout out to the Regional Office in Daly City, the Regional Office in South San Francisco, the Regional Office in Belmont, the Regional Office in Redwood City, the Regional Office in East Palo Alto, Intake Processing Center Unit, Benefits Eligibility Services Telecenter Unit, and the Call Center Unit. For the Health Plan of San Mateo, please come forward, Jose Santiago and Carla Mendoza. Last, but certainly not least, from our community-based organization staff, Iris Bazan, Katie Dolingas, Celia Canali, Vinnie Asibode, I'm sorry, Esibade, and Emma Montezuma.
If the board, uh, wants to come forward to get in the picture, please feel free. Shorter people in front. Srija. We're going to take a brief, uh, break and have some refreshment. Good morning. Thanks for your patience. She just stepped out, so we'll go ahead and start. All right, welcome back. Hope you all enjoyed the, uh, reception, had a lot of, uh, fun things to celebrate this morning, and now I'd like to turn to another, uh, uh, fun thing, important item, and, and if it's okay with my colleagues, I would suggest we take the proposed LGBTQ Commission and the Pride Resolution at this point, and, uh, and the substance abuse treatment would, would fall in next. Okay, very good. Well, I'm happy to bring forward today, along with my colleague Supervisor Tissier, um, a proposal to form, uh, a San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission. Um, and I'd like to start just by giving a little background as to how this came together. Uh, it's one of these situations where a good idea was surfaced and it came to really, be realized. So that idea started with, uh, Jason Galastadis, who's with us today, he's a student at Stanford University, uh, and, and he called, uh, my office with this idea about, uh, bringing more focus and recognition to the LGBTQ community in San Mateo County. So with that idea planted, uh, with the assistance of David Bruder from my office, uh, we reached out to the, to the broader community to get feedback on whether such a commission would be of help, and how it might be structured, and what, what type of issues it, it might take on. Uh, so that work began in February and included discussions with about 12 stakeholders, and we also distributed a survey to the community that was, uh, filled out by almost 100, uh, folks, and, you know, found that indeed there was enthusiasm and interest and a feeling that, um, this is a commission that would serve San Mateo County well. So, uh, as you know from the, from the staff report, the idea behind the commission would be that it would, like other commissions in the county, serve as a advisory commission to the Board of Supervisors, and there's a host of policy issues that have been identified by the working group. Um, you know, in particular, uh, there was a consensus that reaching out to vulnerable LGBTQ community members, particularly youth and seniors, would be a priority. Uh, other issues that the, uh, that the commission, uh, could address would be reducing harassment and bullying of youth, promoting transgender inclusion, recommending initiatives to support LGBTQ families with children, taking positions on state and federal legislation concerning the LGBT community, and many more. And there was also a, a strong sentiment that a commission of this time kind would be very helpful to bring more and greater recognition and visibility to the LGBTQ community. Uh, you know, here in the shadow of San Francisco, um, uh, you know, it's often hard, hard for our initiatives to, uh, you know, rise above, uh, all, all the focus brought to San Francisco, but, you know, it's important for our county and for others in the Bay Area to, to recognize that we have a strong and thriving and growing LGBTQ community here in San Mateo County, and this commission could provide, um, a forum to promote activities in the community, for example, the upcoming Pride Celebration, the Second Annual Pride Celebration, which will be held on June 14th. I'd also note, and we were kind of surprised to find this out, but in re, doing research and trying to look for models of what such a commission might look like, it turns out to the best of our knowledge, there is no such commission in the state of California or in any city, in any county in California or any city in California. We found a few examples in other parts of the country, and of course, a city like San Francisco, they have a broader Human Rights Commission with, uh, that has a sub-focus on LGBTQ issues, but again, to the best of our research, we, we couldn't find a specific parallel to what we're doing here today, so we're very excited that San Mateo County can set an example, uh, set an example for, for others. The commission itself would consist of nine members, appointed by the board. Donna Van Court and the HR Department have, uh, enthusiastically stepped up to support the work of the commission. Donna cannot join us today, but, uh, is already, uh, thinking about, uh, you know, how she can best support the, the work of the commission. So again, very excited to bring this, uh, forward, um, and, uh, I'll turn over to my secret, my colleague Supervisor Tissier.
Thank you, President Pine. I truly appreciate your asking me to join you on co-sponsoring this, um, but I do really want to commend, uh, President Pine and his staff for working so closely with the community to create this historic commission. From the President of the United States mentioning the Stonewall riots in his inaugural address, to 19 states and the Supreme Court affirming that LGBTQ community deserves equal protection under the law, I really find it inspiring that, uh, so much progress has been made in recent years, but that's really because of some bold activism and courageous leadership, and I really believe there's still more that needs to be done. And by bringing it forward, I think our San Mateo County, uh, residents and families, uh, especially those young residents that are struggling with their identity and, and many who suffer from bullying, I think this commission can certainly help, uh, by initiating different policy and different recommendations on how we can better serve and support the LGBTQ community. Uh, so this really is a historic moment here for our county, and I again want to thank President Pine for bringing this, and David and the rest, Jason, everybody for bringing this forward so that we can, uh, lead the way once again in the state of California.
Thank you, Supervisor Tissier. Uh, we do have a, a number of speakers, and I'll go, go ahead and call, call them now. Um, first, Reverend, Reverend Terry Echelberger.
Good morning. I'm Reverend Terry. I'm the pastor of the Peninsula Metropolitan Community Church in San Mateo. Uh, we were founded about nine years ago, and it's been a joy, uh, to be in this community. Peninsula MCC was created by LGBT people for everyone. We have about 10% straight membership, um, and, uh, as I reflected on today, I was imagining the calls that you might have been receiving over the last couple of days about this. And so I'm here to attest that there is a diversity of religious opinion on these matters and about many, many things. There has been, uh, I want to know, I want you to know, uh, President Pine, that I have been speaking fondly of, uh, San Mateo, as people call me for marriage licenses. I've been getting a lot of those calls, people are still coming in from all over the United States, and there is a two-month waiting time sometimes in San Francisco, so I say, "Oh, don't bother, go to San Mateo, it's more fun, it's faster, they're much more friendly." There's, uh, been a lot of change in the last several years in the lives of LGBT people, in the legal landscape, in, in our visibility. It only makes sense to intentionally add some of these voices via the proposed commission. I'm excited that there's going to be a youth representative. I was giggling as I listened to the young men today, um, you know, their lives are very different. They're growing up with role models and resources that we never had, and emerging viewpoints. When we had cocktail parties, we would see who had the worst coming-out story, and they were horrifying, and now these guys are talking about, uh, about eliminating gender binaries. I love that stuff. So eventually, with their leadership, we may have a society where there is no more us and them at all. This commission is going to assure the kind of diversity that keeps our government representative and responsive to all the people who live here, and I hope that it serves as encouragement for other states and counties who wish to follow suit. God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Bernardo. And that'd be followed by Jason Galastadis.
Thank you, President Pine, Supervisors. I'm Robert Bernardo, and I live in South San Francisco, and, um, it's my pleasure to be here today. As one of a very few handful of openly gay elected officials serving, um, our great county, I, I think that this resolution, first of all, I fully support this resolution, and I want to thank President Pine and Supervisor Tissier for introducing the resolution. I think that what this is about is, it's about sending a message, a very powerful message. Um, you know, when I was in elementary school in Daly City, Pacifica, in South San Francisco, and went to high school in San Mateo, I came out at age 16 to my parents, and that was 30 years ago, and so much has happened in the past 30 years. And coming out is about sending a message, and, and I think that when you have events like last year's Pride Initiative, sponsored by the Pride Initiative, the, uh, event at San Mateo Central Park, which is, uh, the Pride event that was held for the first time last year, that sent a message to the community, a very important message about authenticity and visibility and being out and proud of who you are. Um, and so now, this resolution is so important because I think it sends another powerful message to the entire state of California, and it says something about our county, about how we feel, um, about all of our citizens, and the message that it sends, in my opinion, is that for the next generation of LGBTQ people, there is room for you at the table, at the county table, and I think that's very important, and I applaud your efforts, and I want to thank the entire board for considering this resolution. Thank you for your leadership, and thank you for allowing me to share my message.
Thank you, Robert. Jason.
I'm so sorry, um, one thing, I totally forgot. I had it written down, there's another openly LGBTQ elected official in the room, and I just want to acknowledge Sabrina Brennan, who's also on the Harbor District, so we're, we're growing.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you so much to President Pine and the Board of Supervisors for hearing, uh, this issue today. It's incredibly important to the LGBTQ community. The peninsula's my home. I grew up in Redwood City my entire life, and I'm very fortunate that that's the case. I'm also very fortunate that I grew up in a very supportive family environment. My dad is here to support me today, and I was very lucky, um, but not everyone is as lucky as I was. And there were even times where I didn't know where I could go, if I had questions about my identity, or if I needed to express one of the problems that were, is associated with adopting that identity. Now, as public officials, you all know that there is something extremely powerful in community. It can raise somebody and give that person a sense of support, but it can also empower individuals to bring about great change that benefits the community as a whole, and that's why this commission is so important. Uh, this board will not only provide a centralized body to act as a vehicle for creating a more equitable San Mateo County for all citizens, but it will facilitate and will lift all those who participate. I'd like to again thank Supervisor Pine and, uh, I'm sorry, President Pine and Supervisor Tissier for, uh, co-sponsoring, uh, this resolution, and for the entire board for your consideration today. This means a great deal to LGBTQ folks in the county who are not only your voters, but are your neighbors, your friends, and your family. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason, and once again, it started, it started, uh, started with you. Our next speaker would be Glenn McElhenney, followed by Sarah Matlin.
Thank you. Good morning to the supervisors and the staff. Uh, my name is Glenn McElhenney, and I'm an LGBT oral historian that studies Californian history and then brings it to Californian classrooms. And as an historian, I meet with and study a lot of LGBT older adults that live within the state, and one of the areas that I do concentrate in is San Mateo County. So it is wonderful to hear of this commission, so I urge you to also vote for it for two reasons. One is I think it's best practices for the whole rest of the, of the state, that, that San Mateo can, and I'm very encouraged here that you acknowledge, that San Mateo can take a, a very important step as best practices for other counties in the, in California. And then also, there is a large LGBT-identified and Q older adults community in San Mateo County, and they deserve to have good, uh, services and, and good treatment throughout. As you know, many of you might know, that there is a state law for training in senior facilities, older adult homes, uh, nursing homes, Meals on Wheels programs for cultural... facilities, older adult homes, nursing homes, Meals on Wheels programs, for cultural diversity trainings for people who deal with seniors. I think it would be wonderful with this commission that San Mateo could also study how LGBT older adults are being treated in those homes locally, could do surveys, that other people could come in and ask, are you being treated well in these facilities? And again, showing best practices. Let's see how our wonderful LGBT older adults are being treated in San Mateo County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have Sarah Matlin, followed by Jeffrey Adair.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Matlin, and I am the Chair of the ACLU North Peninsula Chapter. There are approximately 2,000 members of the ACLU in San Mateo County. I'm really excited to be here today. This is good news. I am here to lend support to the resolution to establish a commission for lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community members. I'm very proud that our county is a leader in adapting county services and culture to better serve LGBTQ members of our community, specifically seniors, youth, LGBTQ parents, parents of LGBTQ youth, LGBTQ immigrants, and LGBTQ members with special health needs. I make two requests here today regarding the appointment procedure. First, when you're in the process of deciding who the commissioners will be, we request that there be public input regarding the appointments. This is consistent with our general request that the Boards of Supervisors seek community input regarding appointments by the Board in general. Second, we request that the commission's makeup reflect a cross-section of the community: LGBTQ youth, LGBTQ community members with disabilities or their family members, immigrant LGBTQ community members, and community members of color. I'm extremely excited to be here. I am so proud of my county that it is a leader. Thank you so much.
Hello. My name is Jeffrey Adair. I am a native of Redwood City and live in Mr. Slocum's district. In June 17th, almost the anniversary of when marriage was first legal in this county, my partner and I were group number four to get our marriage license. And in this very building, we were married by your former colleague, Rich Gordon, in his chambers. So I'm proud to be a member of the LGBTQ community here and to be part of the working group that helped to advise this process. So I urge you to vote in favor of the commission. The demographic in this county is changing so quickly. There's so many same-sex couples and families coming here to live a better life in San Mateo County, and we need to look after them. Thank you.
Shannon Casey, followed by Sabrina Brennan.
I'm very proud and honored to be here today. My name is Shannon Casey. I'm the family advocate for our Family Coalition, as well as the co-chair for BHRS, Behavior Health and Recovery Services, Office of Diversity and Equity, Pride Initiative. And in the last year, the Pride Initiative has been very active in the county. So I'm well aware of the places where San Mateo is leading, and also in the places that we have an opportunity to really make a difference in the life of our LGBTQ residents here in San Mateo. The great opportunity for this commission, in how it was formed, and the goal of the working group, Jason was one of the first people, he called me, I think fairly early on the list, maybe he told everyone they were high up on the list. But the Pride Initiative is definitely a grassroots group of organizations. There's ten organizations plus community organizations that serve the LGBTQ community here, as well as some businesses and citizens who participate. In the working group, we focused very strongly on making it as effective a government body as possible, or a commission as possible, learning from some of the other groups, and also doing our best to make sure that it highlighted all the different pieces of this particular community. Because, you know, a rainbow is a good thing to represent us. There were all sorts of colors, and all sorts of flavors, and all sorts of walks of life. I work usually in the schools with families who are having challenges, and I was very excited to attend the symposium, I know, supported by this board. There's lots of work happening here. And one great piece of the commission as well would be a springboard for LGBTQ residents to know that there is a place for them to have civic responsibility and hold a place and be held of value. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sabrina Brennan, followed by Carol Cook.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Brennan, and I'd like to thank the board this morning for the opportunity to speak. And I'd like to give special thanks to President Pine and Supervisor Tissier, staff, and all the LGBTQ leaders and allies for working together to form the first LGBTQ county or city commission in California. I'm thrilled to be here today, and I'd like to report that we have three thriving LGBTQ families living on my block in Moss Beach. The new commission will address many important issues facing San Mateo County LGBTQ families, youth, and seniors. Discrimination is pervasive for the transgender community, and anti-transgender bias in combination with racism is especially devastating. Many transgender people live in extreme poverty, and many experience homelessness. A report of the National Transgender Discrimination Survey found that a staggering 41% of respondents reported attempting suicide compared to 1.6% of the general population. With rates rising for those who lost a job due to bias, 55% were harassed, bullied in school, 51% had low household income, or were the victims of physical assault, 61%, and sexual assault, 64%. We have a lot of work to do, and I am just so happy that San Mateo County is starting this commission. It's really wonderful, and I commend all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. Carol Cook, and our final speaker will be Reverend Ben Myers.
Good morning, President Pine and Board of Supervisors. My name is Carol Cook, and I'm very excited to be here on this historic day. I'm representing PFLAG, parents, families, and friends of lesbians, bisexuals, gays, transgender persons. PFLAG supports and commends the Board of Supervisors for creating this commission to address the needs of LGBTQ citizens of our county. The health and well-being of all of our county citizens will be enhanced by your action today. And I also want to say, as a former San Mateo County employee, I just have been so impressed over the years that San Mateo County has always taken a leadership role in supporting the LGBT community, especially their, your employees. And I thank you for that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol. Reverend Myers.
Thank you. My name is the Reverend Ben Myers. It is my honor, privilege, and pleasure to serve as the Minister of the Unitary Universes of San Mateo. I recently am new to that position. I moved down from Berkeley, which up until this point was the center of the universe of all things progressive, true, and right. I am very proud to now be living in an area where we have usurped that title. And I hope to just simply add a punctuation to all that has been said. A month ago, I was here and heard President Pine warn us of the dangers of a rising tide, the sea level, and we are addressing that. I'm now very proud that we are addressing the rising tide of recognition that needs to be brought across this, throughout this state, but also across our country. And so I trust that part of the commission's work will be receiving calls from other communities in how did you do this? How do we do this? How do we further this work? I just bless the work and am so proud of us, and look forward to us all working together, standing on the side of love, and welcoming a stronger weaving of the tapestry of this community. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming today and speaking so eloquently about the possibility and potential for the LGBTQ commission here in San Mateo County. Your words speak volume and really, I think, predict a great success and a vibrant role for the commission in the future. Any other comments from my colleagues?
President Pine, I would like to commend both you and Supervisor Tissier. This is really a proactive step, and I'm really proud of the work that you have put forth today and that we'll be voting on shortly to really address issues, especially for teens and for seniors, and especially for isolated seniors. And I really would also like to make sure that we have family members as part of the commission, especially family members of transgender children, because I think they, children and adults, I think they really are an important source of support, acceptance, and certainly are aware of all the challenges. And as one who has performed same-sex marriages, I'm really proud of the work that you and your staff, as well as Supervisor Tissier, have done today.
Thank you, Tom. Supervisor welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too want to commend you, Mr. President, and Supervisor Tissier for your work. Also wanted to let Supervisor Horsley know that back in 2006, maybe it was 2007, I was the first county clerk in California to publicly advocate for support for same-sex marriages. And I can remember, we used to have the event on the courthouse steps on Valentine's Day for several years running. And I actually asked my colleagues in California to support the legislation that was being considered at that time, and I didn't get one taker to support that legislation back in 2006 or 2007, whenever that was. But I'm very proud of that. And for the historian that's here, the oral historian, I wanted you to know that, starting back then, we actually kept a scrapbook of those events. We took pictures, and we had people write words in the scrapbook, and we did that for a few years. I don't exactly remember how many. But that scrapbook, when same-sex marriages were legalized in California, was supposed to go to the History Museum to be on display there. And I'm going to check with Mr. Church to see that that scrapbook gets over there.
We'd love to do a whole exhibit.
We'll do an exhibit. There you go. And it's really fitting that we're doing this on Election Day, because Election Day, I think, for me at least, is a time when all of us step up and reaffirm our commitment to democracy and equal rights and that whole tradition in America. And so I think it's just awesome, Supervisor Pine, that we're hearing this today on Election Day. And also, Jason, I want to thank you for your leadership on this issue, and thank you for coming to share some information and data with me. Some of it frankly shocked me. I'm appreciative of the time that you took, and congratulations to everybody who had a hand at making this day possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I just want to welcome our new commission to our rich family of commissions. Many of our commissions in this county already have gay and lesbian members and speak out on a regular basis on those issues. And I think that our Commission on Aging, our Commission on Disabilities, our Youth Commission, have gone to such great extent to make this county so fair and so equal. And I know that you all, when we appoint the members, this commission will be right there with equal rights and democracy and spirit of the kind of people who live in San Mateo County. So this is truly a historic day.
Thank you for all your comments. I think we're probably ready for a motion.
I'll move approval.
Okay, I'll go ahead and move approval of the creation of the San Mateo County LGBTQ Commission.
And I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, we have created our commission, and...
I think that's the first time, at least since I've been on the board, we ever got a standing ovation for it.
Right. I think our historic exhibit has another poster board now.
I still have my license to perform marriages, and I'll give that one to you as well.
And we also want to take a moment to pass another proclamation today, recognizing Pride Month and calling attention to the upcoming Pride celebration in San Mateo County on Saturday, June 14th. So I will move approval of that proclamation.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second. Third, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Well, what I'd like to suggest is, if everyone in the audience who would like to want to come forward, and along with my colleagues, and we can just take a picture together to mark this occasion. And as people come up, I want to, again, thank the stakeholder group for everything that you did to make this possible. I'd like to recognize John Niblin and Lance Alkon, who did yeoman's work. And finally, David Bruto of my staff. David Bruto, want to raise your hand for a minute, who really picked up this ball and did some great work with it.
I don't want to block anyone in this one.
Okay. Yeah. All right.
Oh, I did that. That's right. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Make it today. Thank you so much. Brother.
But since we've done that, and we do have further business, we'll move on to a presentation on substance use treatment challenges and opportunities. Steve Kaplan.
Good morning, Board members, President Pine, Mr. Malpe, Mr. Myers. I want to thank Mr. Malpe for suggesting I come to the Board to update you on some issues around substance use treatment, particularly in the context of healthcare reform, so that you have the, kind of the latest information of some of our challenges and what we've been doing to try to address those. It's easy, kind of, to sum up that since the adoption of health reform for substance use treatment, it's a combination of a very tumultuous, challenging, but really exciting time. In other words, it's really a game changer for us. I want to give you three pieces of context that is backdrop to why health reform is so important for substance use treatment. About seven or eight years ago, we developed a strategic plan in San Mateo County. One of the things we did was, we estimated the number of people in the county that we believe have a, or had at the time, a diagnosable substance use disorder, to get a sense of what the overall need was. And at that time, using various methodologies... And at that time, using various methodologies, we estimated that at least 20,000 people in this county had a diagnosable substance use disorder that would most likely receive, need to receive services in the public sector. There's a larger number that may have accessed or would have available treatment in another way. But for the public sector, we estimated about 20,000 people. And we had the capacity to serve about one in five of those individuals. Secondly, a long time ago, I don't know, 25 or 30 years ago, substance use was taken off of the list as a disabling condition for supplemental social security income. So in other words, individuals that had a substance use disorder would not qualify. And what that did is that eliminated them from Medicaid, basically, as an insurance. And the third thing is that, when you look in the long term, substance use treatment funding has essentially been stagnant for 30 years. There really were little blips of increases, like with Prop 36, but that money went away. So when you look at it, it's been flat. And just for something in comparison, this county, along with most counties, see a differentiation between funding that's supposedly specific for mental health at about six to eight times more funding for mental health services than substance use services. So that's been constant over the years. So what's exciting about this with health reform is that it was included in the federal legislation as one of the 10 essential health benefits, along with mental health. That was a key victory at a policy level for substance use treatment. The parity legislation, both in the state, that there's work that Senator Beal's doing around parity issues, but that there's the federal parity issue for mental health and substance use, that it was also an historic piece of legislation. And then in California, for implementation of the health reform, they articulated a pretty significant substance use treatment benefit for both covered California beneficiaries as well as Medicaid beneficiaries. Oh, can I do this? Oh, right here. All right. So a few things in the act, in the ACA, like I said, it's a covered benefit for both covered California and Medi-Cal. What that means is potentially many more clients for providers. Mr. Malpe was giving you the update on the number of people enrolled. And we know through other kinds of evaluations and data that a significant number of individuals now receiving Medicaid will have substance use disorder issues to address. The other thing, in addition to the eligibility changes, it really changes, it's a game changer for how we deliver treatment. It moves us away from, pretty much, not away from, but enhancing the traditions that grew out of 12-step in the paraprofessional community into a much more professionalized treatment service. And that requires another level of training for people, a higher expectation of quality of services, et cetera, and I'll get into that in a little bit later. So really, at the level of the change, we had to look at the issue of our provider system. And what we're moving towards is really being able to provide the right treatment at the right place, the right time. And moving away from the historic use of, there was a program, it had a set curriculum, regardless of your individual needs, you go through that program, that it's becoming much more individualized treatment, more licensed professionals that supplement and enhance the peer and counselor staff. And as I've told our providers, with health reform, they actually have to be healthcare providers, which they haven't had to be healthcare providers. And all of the administrative responsibilities and quality assurance responsibilities that comes with providing healthcare now has to be provided by our providers. And as you know, 98% of what we do in this county for substance use treatment is through our CBOs. And we also have to focus on quality, longer-term outcomes. What is the impact of that investment of treatment? And how do we maintain and support people's primary treatment experience over a longer period of time? Because we know substance use disorder is not an acute condition, it's a chronic illness that needs to be supported over a long period of time. So one of the things we looked at as we were implementing this, where are our providers on a whole series of variables in terms of their ability to provide quality services in this new world? And these are some variables that were part of a nationwide study that was assessing the landscape of treatment providers in anticipation of health reform. So we took that down locally to see how we're doing with our providers. And five is the gold star, and this was our internal assessment of where our providers are and where we needed to take them along this journey so that we could meet the requirements of the ACA. One of the things in this survey that I just mentioned that was done nationwide was that they, whoops, the conclusion of the survey was that one-third of the existing substance use treatment providers would likely go out of business under healthcare reform, that they could not, if you looked again at this previous slide, they would not be able to move their needle, so to speak, along these variables sufficiently to be able to be a viable provider in this new environment. So their conclusion in this report was that those that remain unprepared are going to go out of business. And we've actually seen a couple of changes locally in our provider network. We've had two mergers in the last six months, where an organization, a large substance use behavioral health organization located, based in San Francisco, is setting up shop here in San Mateo through an RFP process, but they've also merged with Asian American Recovery Services and Women's Recovery Association. And I think we're going to see more of that over the long period of time. So we've done a number of really intensive things with our providers to try to help them along this journey over the last couple of years. We were involved in the state's waiver, their so-called waiver bridge to health reform. And San Mateo County, unlike really any county in the state, we, as part of that waiver, provided a full substance use treatment benefit. It was a way for us to start to get ready for health reform. Your board directed us and provided funding for us to make sure all of our providers had an electronic health record, our avatar system, we've done that. We've been working with them on how to actually bill for services. Again, one of those back-room things that is going to be the lifeblood of the organization. If you can't bill, you're not getting paid. If you don't get paid, well, we know what happens. We needed to move away from, again, this cookie-cutter treatment and teach them and work with them around creating individual treatment plans and actually customizing the care for people that actually is aligned with what they need. So we've been working with them to say, there really isn't such, anything such as a 90-day treatment model. How do we know in 90 days? Maybe somebody could benefit in 35 days and then move on to a different level of care. Maybe somebody needs more than 90 days. So it's really individualized. We needed to actually establish clinical criteria, which we did not have, to determine where somebody goes. So if somebody had a certain level of need, do they go into a residential treatment program versus an outpatient program? And I really want to recognize Clara Boydin. She's in the audience. Clara, raise your hand. Clara is our alcohol and drug manager, and she's really been the one grinding these changes day in and day out with our providers for the last two years, and has really just been just done an amazing job in the progress we've made. But there's more to do. We believe that we will not be able to provide, through the Medicaid dollars, long-term residential treatment for people. We think it's going to be much shorter stays, where people are going to get stabilized, assessed, and really launched on their way of a, more of an outpatient experience. The Healthcare Reform Act stresses throughout needing to integrate care with our primary care partners. We've been doing that with the Health Plan, as well as our clinics and Ravenswood as well. And one of the things that's really exciting is some new advances in the use of medication to help people in their recovery process. And we have, we've just finished a pilot using a medication for chronic alcoholics to reduce their craving, and the initial results are spectacular, actually. And so we're working with the Health Plan and with other divisions within the health system, having conversations with probation about actually expanding the use of this medication and case management system to work with people that we've not been that successful in working with in the past. So there are, as you would expect, some bumps in the road. In order to bill under the new health reform, a provider has to be certified. Some of you may have been following or aware of statewide some fraud issues in the drug Medi-Cal program. They've been significant, they've been on CNN and the whole thing. The state has been very preoccupied on addressing the fraud issue. And as a result of that, the ability to get providers certified has really taken a backseat. Very few providers, so health reform went into effect January 1st, very few providers in the state have, new providers have actually been certified. The state is losing millions of dollars right now by not being able to draw federal dollars. Remember, all of the newly eligible people would receive 100% federal reimbursement. The state is essentially not drawing, and we're not able to draw in any of that. So there's a lot of barriers right now to getting new programs certified. We entered into an agreement with the state, I think we're the only county, to actually work with them to help facilitate the certification process. But as of yet, it's not really yielded any results. So currently, we have one provider certified?
In our county, currently, we have two providers certified, one delivering certificates.
Yeah. So we have some work to do, so they're not drawing money. A very big issue is all of our residential programs right now, with the exception of one, would not be able to bill for Medicaid services because of what's known as the IMD exclusion, which essentially is any facility that has more than 16 beds can't bill Medicaid. This is a huge problem in California. 90% of the beds in California would not be eligible for Medicaid reimbursement under the current rules. So there's a lot of work to be done around that. We're working very hard with the state around a waiver request to the Center for Medicaid Medicare Services that we hope will be able to work its way around this exclusion so we would be able to bill for these residential services. So this is a really critical issue. This waiver should be going into CMS, hopefully by the end of this year. And we've been having conversations with CMS in collaboration with the state. So what that has meant is we've, knowing the delay in the certification, we've been providing bridge funding to our providers. So because they were drawing down federal dollars during the waiver, we've been providing them bridge funding so that capacity wouldn't be lost. Well, that is running out the end of this year, but in working with the CMO, and Mr. Malpe in particular, has agreed to include in the 1415 budget more bridge funding for our residential treatment providers for the fiscal year. Hopefully, we'll be able to fix the problem before that, but at least it gives us some room to work over the next 12 months. So we're really appreciative of that. Probably not happening, I can tell you, in any other county.
Through the president, can I ask a question about, what's the relevance of 16 beds?
Well, it's just what CMS has in regulation around the cutoff of what's eligible or what's not eligible for federal reimbursement.
What is their rationale? What's, is there...
I don't think, it's, I don't think there's one, frankly. So this rule was created about 40 years ago as part of the deinstitutionalization of psychiatric hospitals, and it was to try to disincentivize people building kind of pseudo-state hospitals or psych hospitals in the community that were really big and being able to draw federal money. But it is, I think, my, and somebody else might have more information, but I think it's pretty arbitrary that it's 16 beds.
Just a follow-up on that. So if our providers today with more than 16 beds, they'll have, they can't operate above 16 unless this waiver is obtained, which...
Well, they can operate, but we wouldn't be able to draw Medicaid dollars for them. We'd have to fund them in another way. So essentially, we lose 100% federal funding for those dollars because they're not eligible to bill. So we're really, as you know, and this board and the county manager's been fully committed to substance use treatment, just wanted to let you know that outcomes are important. We know that in substance use treatment, two-thirds of our clients are recovering, the relapse rates in substance use are really parallel to other chronic health conditions. They're about the same as diabetes care. They're about the same as care for hypertension. About one-third of the people in treatment do pretty well, and they don't really relapse. One-third relapse a lot, and they have to keep getting kind of re-intervention, and one-third is sort of in that middle group that relapses a few times and then finds some long-term stability. So a lot of times, people think substance use treatment has this outlier of people relapsing all over the place, but in fact, it's very similar to other chronic health conditions. We also believe, as we move to this individualized treatment, and we have some of these new medications and new evidence practices, actually, those recovery rates will increase. We need to figure out ways of staying and supporting people after their primary treatment, and we've done some work in that as well. And as you know, substance use treatment, when it works, is really a driver for avoiding all kinds of other costs: criminal justice costs, child welfare costs, health costs. It's a major driver, when it's untreated, to other services and costs that we provide. So that's our update, but I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just have one quick question. You had shown us the chart with the providers and how they need to get to number five, and most of them are one or two.
Yeah.
How long, I mean, I realize some may drop off, as you mentioned, some may merge, but to get people to that end, is there a timeframe that you think, or it's just you just work...
I think we just keep plowing through and keep working at it. Sooner the better. But yeah, it's just constant work.
Okay.
It's a, I mean, it's a total shift in how they do their business.
And one other question on the billing side.
Yeah.
On issues like this, do they have to code it like we do the coding at the hospital? Is it the same type of thing where it's very technical?
There's codes that they have to code for the type of services. We submit the claims, we pay them. Yeah. Like I said, they have to become a health provider. They have to bill, they have to code, they have to document.
And I think that's going to be an area that's going to be really important, because we've seen at the hospital over time, I mean, there has to be the constant training, because there's a lot of dollars that will be lost, or they kick it back, and you don't, you know, so you go through that whole thing, and then that's when we'll lose the providers, for sure.
Our quality management staff has spent a lot of time working with our providers around documentation issues, because it's a new ballgame for them.
Thanks, Ian. Thanks for the presentation. At least you got to do it in the morning.
Steve, I have a question about the certification process. You know, I've spoken to some of the providers, and I don't have a good sense for, you know, how many are going to be able to achieve certification in the next, let's say, six or 12 months. Do you have a sense for, you know, how high those obstacles are? And it strikes me as a pretty demanding road for them to go down.
Well, if we don't get the waiver solved, the resident, all the residential providers are out, basically, except for one. We would expect that one would get certified within the next three to six months. I think the other outpatient programs are pretty much on track. I mean, I would expect they would be certified within six months. Yeah. Those outpatient programs.
So the biggest challenge is the residential?
Residential.
And the waiver pertains to the 16-bed issue?
We've been drafting language in the waiver to provide that benefit, and CMS could waive it. New York is working on a similar waiver, so there is interest. We'll just have to see what they do.
Thank you.
Just a couple of quick, maybe, an observation. I guess we were looking at replacing cordillaries with smaller cottages. That apparently doesn't look like it'll work, because they, well, even if they're all 16 beds, I understand they all would have to be run by separate organizations, which would be an administrative nightmare, I would think, a hard, how to coordinate them.
Yeah.
And the other, my experience with substance abuse is that places like Delancey Street, Walden House seem to have pretty good success, but mostly because people live there the rest, they pretty much, it's the rest of their lives. They're going to... They're connected.
Yeah.
They're not going to be certified, I assume that's-
Well, they'd be too big.
Too big.
And too long.
Right. And they are kind of, it seems to me that they are kind of like lifetime, but they are spectacularly successful.
Yeah. I mean, you'll stay there one, two, three years.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah, so that won't be eligible for any type of reimbursement.
Yeah, big changes. All right. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Mr. Caplan.
Thank you, Steve.
Our, our next item concerns the San Mateo County Flood Control District and the ongoing work in the San Francisco Creek area. Mr. Porter?
Thank you, President Pine, members of the board, Mr. Malpe. Staff is before you to recommend that your board take two actions today. One is to adopt findings and facts, which will adopt the mitigated monitoring and reporting program that's included in the SEQA document that's been prepared by the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. And the other is to approve a funding agreement, which will allow for the construction of improvements on San Francisco Creek between Highway 101 and the bay. So, just as a, a brief background on this, in 1998, there was some severe flooding on San Francisco Creek that, that caused the JPA to be formed. Palo Alto was flooded, 101 was closed. And as a result, several communities got together, Palo Alto, Menlo Park, East Palo Alto, and the San Mateo County Flood Control District, as well as the Santa Clara Valley Water District, to come up with some improvements to resolve the flooding issues on San Francisco Creek. The project before you was the first step in resolving those flooding issues. The JPA has gone ahead and prepared design documents to handle what's called the riverine flooding from a 100-year storm on the portion of the creek between 101 and the bay. So, what that does is essentially allows for other improvements to occur upstream of 101 that would be designed and funded at a later date, so that at some point, the flooding issues on San Francisco Creek are resolved. Now, the San Mateo County Flood Control District, which you're the governing board of, is a partner in this, in this project, and the Flood Control District has committed to roughly $800,000 in funding, funding towards this project. And that was, that came about through a match that we agreed to, the county, or, excuse me, the Flood Control District agreed to. And that is matching dollars put up by East Palo Alto. So, we're recommending that your board approve staff's recommendations, and once that is done, funding will be in place to work on the project, or to complete the project. I do know at this point, they do have design plans nearly completed. They've not received all their permits yet. So, the likelihood of this project occurring this summer is slim. We've been working, the JPA staff, as well as the various cities have been looking at winter preparedness, particularly for East Palo Alto. As you know, East Palo Alto had some levy overtopping, it was a couple of years ago, actually, we had a pretty dry winter last year. But we want to make sure that that doesn't happen again. So, the jurisdictions have got together, there's meetings throughout the summer to come up and shore up the, the portion of the EPA levy that was essentially overtopped last time, and make sure that we can get through this winter without endangering any of the homes in that jurisdiction. With that, I'll conclude my report. Thank you.
I might add just a few comments as the representative from the board that sits on the San Francisco Creek Joint Powers Authority. So, the matter before us again concerns the Beta 101 construction, which is incredibly important for health and safety in, in East Palo Alto. And as you see in the report, you know, the preponderance of the funds come from the Santa Clara Valley Water District and the state grant that's been given to the, to the JPA. Working out the, this funding arrangement was many, many months in the making, given the complexity of a JPA and a lot of discussions, so we're very happy this came together. For a long time, we thought this was the real long pole in the tent to get this project going, but unfortunately, it turns out that there's a even taller pole, and that's the Regional Water Control Board, which has provided very, surprisingly, onerous comments on, about the project. And a lot of work is now focused on trying to obtain that pivotal permit from the Regional Water Board. But as Mr. Porter stated, that issue looks, it is almost certain now that instruction would be, would be delayed and wouldn't be in place for the upcoming rainy season, which there are some predictions about alneonial conditions. So, we're going to have to keep a close eye on, on interim, interim solutions. And it's been quite, I must say, a very eye-opening experience to go through this regulatory process with the Regional Water Board. And there are a, a lot of our people throughout the, not, not only in the JPA, but in the broader, broader Bay Area and Sacramento, in fact, to have some, some reservations about what has occurred here with the Water Board's approach to this, this incredibly critical project that not only is critical for health and safety, but actually does remarkable things for the, the environment and the prospects for some endangered species in this area. So, I just wanted to give that extra, extra flavor.
Mr. President, one, one additional comment. I think it needs to be reemphasized that while this project will mitigate some of the upstream flooding that occurs in this area, there's still the issue of tidal flooding that is not resolved by this, and it's a, obviously, with global warming and rising sea levels, it becomes more and more a, a major issue.
There's a, a separate project by the JPA called the Safer Project to look at the tidal issues, and so, there are, there are efforts underway there, but that, that's further out.
So, with that, I'm happy to make a motion to, if I can read it, make the findings a fact in adopting a mitigation, monitoring, and reporting program, and also authorize an agreement among the Joint Powers Authority.
Second.
Okay, motion made, and seconded all in favor. Aye. Thank you. We will now hear a update on the, on the Plan Princeton project. Samonowitz.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Malpe. I'm Steve Monowitz, I'm the Deputy Director of the Planning and Building Department, and I'm pleased to have this opportunity to update you on Plan Princeton and to present to you our latest milestone in the project, the publication of an existing conditions report. Thank you. My presentation today will consist of a brief overview of where we are in the project, and then focus on the existing conditions report, which really establishes a baseline from which we can develop a plan that is responsive to current conditions, including natural conditions and man-made conditions. And then I'll conclude with next steps. So, Plan Princeton is a comprehensive effort by the Planning and Building Department to update the plans, policies, and programs that affect the area west of Highway 1, south of Moss Beach, and north of the city of Hat Moon Bay. The purpose of the plan is, we've got multiple objectives, and I, I'll start with the bullet on the bottom, which is comply with the Coastal Act and state airport compatibility requirements, because at the end of the day, for this plan to be enforceable, we're going to need to obtain Coastal Commission certification, as well as approval from CCAG that the plan is consistent with those requirements.
That's, that's the easy part, right?
The other bullets in this slide kind of support those efforts. When it comes to Coastal Act compliance, of course, enhancing coastal access and recreational opportunities, as well as protecting our coastal resource are going to be key requirements. Also, critical for Coastal Act compliance is this concept of providing land and facilities for priority uses, and I'll spend some time on that. The second two bullets here speak to that. Support coastal dependent and coastal related uses, and provide needed facilities for commercial fishing and recreational boating. But we want to go beyond just complying with the Coastal Act, and we want to do what is going to best serve the residents of San Mateo County, and we think we have a great opportunity here to promote economic development and to abate neighborhood blight and zoning violations, among other ways, by simplifying and streamlining the permit process, and I think this plan provides an opportunity to do that. We're also going to address parking, circulation, and infrastructure needs, and identify and evaluate solutions to shoreline erosion. So, here we are at the second step of the process, the completion of the background studies, which will inform our second, our third step, which is to develop land use alternatives that are responsive to existing conditions and that achieve the community vision. Throughout this process, of course, public participation is going to be key, and I'd like to thank the members of the Steering Committee and the Technical Advisory Committee, who've contributed to the production of this existing conditions report. So, the existing conditions report consists of the following chapters. In terms of land use and urban design, this is where we're documenting the existing character of the community, so that we, our plan is responsive to the existing character and compatible with that character. With regard to fishing, boating, and visitor needs, this is a critical area for us to ensure Coastal Act compliance, by ensuring we protect the working waterfront that Princeton is. Of course, we need to do that consistent with the protection of environmental resources, and the existing conditions report provides delineation of the different types of resources that will need to be protected by the plan. I mentioned natural hazards and shoreline erosion. We intend to develop a plan that is responsive to sea level rise, and this existing conditions report documents some of the challenges that we'll face in doing so. Circulation, parking, and coastal access. We intend to not only address this issue with respect to Princeton, but how Princeton relates to the larger midcoast. And I'll talk today about how this effort is being done in conjunction with a comprehensive transportation management plan that will address those issues for the larger region. And finally, infrastructure per public, for, public facilities and public services. We need to plan for a level of development that's feasible and sustainable, so we can live within our means out there. So, let me talk about the land use and urban design elements of Princeton. Many of you are probably familiar with the visitor-serving areas along Capistrano Road, where we have commercial businesses, restaurants, retails, and lodging. As you go further out towards the ocean, you enter into more of the industrial waterfront area, where we have attempted to provide room and land available for the types of priority uses I mentioned before. Interspersed amongst these types of industrial waterfront uses, we have some grandfathered residential uses, which, under current regulations, can stay, but we do, do not expect much of any additional residential development in the area, given airport compatibility requirements and Coastal Act priority use requirements. And of course, the important natural and scenic resources that surround the Princeton proper, if you will, and ensuring that we do what's necessary to protect them over the long term. Okay, with regard to airport compatibility, this plan is occurring at the same time that CCAG is updating the airport land use plan. And hopefully, you can see in this slide, what we show is the safety zones that are proposed by the draft airport land use plan update. Within Safety Zone 1, which is just south of the airport in blue, you can see a shaded area, which is the existing airport overlay. So, the good news is that the draft airport land use plan allows for slightly higher occupancy rates than our current AO zone. The challenge in meeting, achieving compliance with this new draft plan is that it covers a much larger area. So, the project team has been working closely with CCAG staff and the consultants who have prepared that plan to ensure that the alternatives that will be developed in the next phase achieve compliance with those requirements. Moving on to priority uses, commercial fishing. Princeton is the second most significant fishing port in the Bay Area. However, seafood-related business is unlikely to be a major economic driver in the community, and that's based on the analysis that was performed by the project team of the trends that are occurring in that type of business. However, we do believe that there is an opportunity for small-scale, local-serving specialty seafood projects that focus on locally caught seafood. And so, we intend to establish policies that will promote those uses. Protecting priority uses is a delicate balance, where you want to ensure that you reserve land needed by those facilities, but to do so in a way that doesn't unnecessarily prohibit other uses. And this picture of more of the interior industrial area gives you a sense that some of these sites may be underutilized, and that there's an opportunity for other types of industrial uses that may not necessarily be directly related to fishing or boating, but could support those uses. So, we are exploring policies that will accommodate a wider range of industrial and commercial-type uses in that area. Visitor-serving uses are also a priority under the Coastal Act, at a lower level than coastal dependent and recreational fish, boating and fishing, but nevertheless, priority over residential. And as you're aware, there's great demand for all the exciting coastal recreation opportunities that occur out at, in Princeton, and we think that this provides a great opportunity to take advantage of that and to really provide facilities that will not only enhance the visitor-serving experience, but lead to development that will benefit the community. I mentioned doing so in a way that protects environmental resources, and this is a map that delineates many of the important natural resources that need to be protected by the plan, including creek and wetland areas and coastal scrub habitat on the Pillar Point Bluff area. And don't forget Pillar Point Marsh as well, and I'll speak to that in a little bit. Okay. Visual resources are equally important. We've documented where the views are, and I, with regard to the, these views, I'd like to note, make a distinction between some of the views that you get of the open ocean and the open coastal habitats from many vantage points in the area. And distinguish that from the type of viewing experience you get through walking through the wor- working waterfront, where the views are maybe, are more narrow, maybe it's a quick glimpse of the coast as you walk down the street. They're different, but they're both important, and I think part of the challenge of this plan will be to craft visual protection policies that do both, that they really protect the open expansive views that are important, but also allow for development within the industrial waterfront area that may have some impact on views, but still afford those glimpses at the ocean that gives you the connection between the industrial uses and the marine environment. Natural hazards are a constraint that the plan must address. These include landslides, faults, areas of liquefaction, and flooding areas, and, sorry, tsunami hazard as well. And for the most part, these hazards can be addressed through regulations that limit types of land uses in certain areas, and through construction requirements. However, when we deal with natural hazards related to hydrology and sea flooding, we have this additional challenge of sea level rise. The Coastal Commission has prepared draft guidance on sea level rise. We have taken those recommendations into consideration as we've developed this plan. And for example, in the area of Pillar Point Marsh, which is shown in blue here, we are not only intending to protect the marsh as it exists now, but as it grows into the future as a result of sea level rise. as a result of sea level rise. Directly along the shoreline is another challenging area, both from natural erosion and sea level rise. And as you can see in these photos, the history here has been of kind of haphazard structures being erected, oftentimes without permits. And these types of structures have adverse impacts on aesthetics and recreation opportunities. So, we've documented what's out there now, and we're going to use that as a basis to see what we can do to improve the situation. Similarly, we've documented vehicle, bicycle, and pedestrian patterns, both as they occur specifically within the planning area and as development of the planning area relates to larger traffic issues, including congestion along Highway One. So, as I mentioned earlier, we're taking a two-pronged approach here. Thanks to the Board of Supervisors, we have funds and have recently entered into contract with a consultant to produce a comprehensive transportation management plan that is not only going to look at solutions to the traffic problem from a roadway and transit and trail enhancement side of things, but also from a land use side of things. As many of you may recall, this balance between development and traffic was a major consideration in our last local coastal program update. And as a means to address those issues, the county agreed to conduct this transportation management plan and to evaluate the impacts of the land use build-out provided by the local coastal program. And we are going to be looking at techniques to reduce and mitigate that build-out as necessary to resolve traffic problems that can't be solved through roadway expansions. Nevertheless, I think that the, excuse me, the opportunities with regard to trails and roadway enhancements are significant here. I think that the Princeton area provides a great possibility to have some sort of park-and-ride program if we can work with SAM Trans and other transit providers to identify a location where folks can drop off their cars and hop on public transit, either to get over the hill or to just go to different visitor destinations along the coast. With regard to parking, we found that while we don't have a lot of space available on major events, on the typical afternoon, parking is generally available. What we found is that the, one of the primary problems is it's not adequately signed. People don't know how to find it and to get there. So, a takeaway from the existing conditions report that will inform our plan is, what can we do to provide wayfinding so people can make, take advantage of the parking that is available? Coastal access, we have a number of opportunities to provide enhanced coastal access at street ends and to really incorporate the coastal trail into the area so that people know how to find it and have the opportunity to enjoy it. With regard to actually physically getting to the beach, the street ends currently are unimproved and make it, in some cases, difficult to get down to the water, and we see an opportunity to enhance those access points. Moving on to infrastructure, the area is covered by two different water service districts. In this map, we show the area that's served by Montero Water and Sanitary District, who has about 128 gallons per day available to serve new development throughout their district. A large portion of that water is reserved for priority uses. Now, the portion that's covered by Montero Water and Sanitary District is not an area where we anticipate a significant amount of new development. We think that that is more likely to occur within Coside County Water District territory, shown here in the beige color. The status of that water supply is there's 238 water connections available. 209 of them are reserved for priority uses. So once again, the importance of providing for priority uses is an essential component here because water for other uses is heavily restricted. The other thing to note here is that the CCWD is operating under a permit from the Coastal Commission, which requires that any increase in capacity address traffic issues on Highway One and Ninety-two. So to the degree that future development within this area may be reliant upon an expanded water supply, the transportation management plan that we are developing will be essentially, essential to address that connection between expanded water service and traffic issues. We took a look at the storm drain system. We identified the need to improve some pipes and conveyance of the storm water, and we've also enacted through our midcoast update, new development standards for storm water that will provide protection of water quality. With regard to wastewater service, the overall assessment is that there's adequate capacity to treat the wastewater. The challenge is with the conveyance system, delivering the wastewater to the treatment system during periods of wet weather, where we experience infiltration into the pipes, and we've had some historic events of overflow. Granada Sanitary has recently installed some storage tanks to help address that issue, and I think we'll need to continue to work with the service districts to improve the pipe so we can reduce that problem. Okay, back to where we are and next steps. Now that we've completed the existing conditions report, we'll be moving on to defining alternative means that achieve the community vision in a manner that takes existing conditions and regulations into consideration. Once again, public participation is a critical component of this effort, and when it comes to developing and reviewing the alternatives, we've got a lot of work to do to get the word out, to engage our steering committee and technical advisory committee in helping to draft these alternatives, and then conducting public workshops where local residents and stakeholders will have an opportunity to comment and share those views. And once we have honed in on those alternatives, presenting them before the Midcoast Community Council and other interested stakeholders and decision-making bodies to make sure everyone stays informed of this very important effort that we are undertaking. So in closing, I guess the take-home message from the existing conditions report is that there are some significant constraints to development of the area, but they're not unexpected or surprising. We had a sense going into this project that these would be constraints that we would have to deal with, and I think now that we have identified the details, we are well-positioned to respond to them. I think perhaps more important than the constraints is the opportunities that we've identified through this effort. Opportunities to provide improved access and circulation. Opportunities to really support our priority uses in working waterfront. Opportunities to enhance economic development for the property owners who haven't been able to make full economic use of their property. Opportunities to simplify and streamline the permit process. And then finally, a great opportunity to preserve our valuable natural and visual resources. So that concludes my presentation. My recommendation to you today is to simply accept this report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation.
If I might make some comments on this project that's really started in my district. We originally started this, I've been around Princeton for a number of years. We actually started years ago even when I was a sheriff, and we started looking at all of these lots that were underutilized and inappropriately utilized with essentially junk storage, with boats and toxic substances. In fact, we even had a major fire over there with toxic substances catching fire, and it was pretty much of a nightmare. In that case, we started a code enforcement project with the Sheriff's Department. They've been extremely helpful, and Cal Fire, the Harbor District, my staff person Sarah Rosendahl's really kind of led a lot of that, and we have done a lot in terms of cleaning up lots, getting rid of people who are living in convicts' boxes, things of that sort. But this project is really, I think is really important to the broader community on the entire coast side. So we've had, I think, at least three public meetings, and we were pleasantly surprised to find 200 people showing up at a time and giving us a lot of their opinions, and they have a lot of opinions. And it really is a great opportunity because this is the only industrial area on the coast side between San Francisco and always to Monterey, and it does have some great opportunities for potential, well, just enhancement of the whole area there, greater access for recreational, educational, environmental resources. And at the same time, and I think we do want to take a look at eventually going to the Coastal Commission. In fact, we were given an opportunity to speak to the Coastal Commission through my friend and colleague Supervisor Groom. I was able to get 10 minutes to speak to the Coastal Commission and to talk about Princeton and how I thought, how important this project is. And I think when we, we are fortunate that we're going to have the Coastal Commission meet on the coast in November, and this is one of the areas that we will have them look at. So I want to appreciate the work that Steve and especially Summer Bertelson from the Planning Department, she's done a fabulous job with public presentations and working on this project.
Thank you.
Other questions? I just had one, Steve. Could you just talk a little bit more about, you know, how you're looking at the sea level rise issue here, like 50 and 100 years out?
Sure. Well, we are looking at the topography surrounding the marsh and anticipated levels of sea level rise so that we can hopefully somewhat accurately predict its eventual boundaries and ensure that we provide adequate setbacks. So that's specific to the marsh and the wetland. Sea level rise is also a major factor in shoreline erosion and how we deal with that problem. So, we are including anticipated sea levels in running our models of erosion potential, and we are going to be reviewing a range of potential solutions to that erosion problem. There may be an opportunity to work with the Harbor District to try and pursue some sort of soft solution to it through the use of dredge spoils. If those spoils are a high enough quality that we can use it on the beach to restore the beach and establish a regular program that may provide at least some mitigation to sea level rise and the associated erosion. But that needs to be studied much more in depth, and we intend to do that.
Thanks for those extra comments. All right.
So I will move to accept the reports on the Princeton, planned Princeton project.
Second.
Motion to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, we have a report now concerning our comprehensive reentry system for San Mateo County. And I don't know who's going to kick that off, I guess, Mr. Keen? Now you have to come out of the corner in the back there and...
So the fun thing is I have to unload all my junk out of my pocket now, so...
Yeah.
County Manager Malby, Mr. Byers, County Council, thank you very much for taking time to hear our proposal. I am here, I'm strictly the mouthpiece, I'll tell you that upfront, but in all seriousness though, I'm here as a representative of a much larger collaborative. Here in the audience, we have representatives from Behavioral Health, Human Services Agency, the Sheriff's Office, Correctional Health, and Public Health, who also will assist in answering specific questions that you have. So the issue at hand is really one of fragmentation of services. Before, a gap existed between in custody and post-custody services. We've known for a long time that while inmates are in custody, they do get a myriad of services here in San Mateo County. It's one of the things that really distinguishes our county from others. But there has been a gap in what happens once those inmates are released and go back into the community. Oftentimes, a person will have multiple case managers, which, as you know, can be confusing and sometimes challenging for not only the clients, but for the systems partners. We wind up wasting resources because we duplicate services unknowingly. And the informal and inconsistent communication between the service providers represents a barrier towards a long-term success for the particular client. And interestingly enough, conflicting information given to clients is one of the major report outs you will get when you sit down with clients and kind of debrief them about their experiences with getting services. What we're finding is that while we're all very well-intended, the reality is, is that if we all overgive people things to do, ultimately, they want them doing nothing. So it's really trying to make sure that we don't provide further conflict for already a stressful situation. We were lucky in our county to have the ability to create the Achieve 180 program, which was in existence from 2010 to 2014. Achieve 180 bridged the gap between in custody and post-custody services and programs. It helped to reduce recidivism. And for the purpose of our conversation today, recidivism is defined, per the Achieve 180 recidivism data, as successful completion, where a client has met one or more goals successfully by the agreed-upon by the client, the case manager, and the probation officer after release, and then secondarily, that the client has completed one full year in the program without any revocations, violations, or new offenses. Achieve 180 also supported transition of formerly incarcerated individuals back into their communities, and it was funded through San Mateo County as well as a federal grant to Second Chance Act. Couple of quick points of success. Seventy-nine percent of all program participants did not recidivate, using that definition, did not recidivate while enrolled in Achieve 180. And also, eighty-nine percent of program participants did not recidivate after a year So currently, Service Connect, so 2011 to present. Service Connect is a collaborative effort between probation, the Sheriff's Office, Human Services Agency, and health system. It provides emergency resources and ongoing support for individuals who are aligned under AB 109. It also should be noted that 63% of all AB 109 clients have successfully completed their supervision period. And in this next slide, what we attempted to show you was really what's the difference between Achieve 180 and how it transitions to Service Connect, which was AB nine only, and then our comprehensive reentry program that we're proposing here today. And probably the natural question right off the back is, why would we want to recreate a whole new program when it appears that Service Connect really offers a lot of the gaps that existed in Achieve 180? And while this is true in the sense that there are a lot of positives and strengths that we learned through Service Connect, really, Service Connect and this new program really are extensions of one another. What we did was learn from all the positive things from Service Connect, but at the same time too, we also learned that there were some things we could have done better. Most notably, multiple agency coordination, the inside-out process, really more focused around the idea of structured case planning to present a warm handoff in such a way that encouraged a success. And also, what we found out was from our focus groups, that onsite support, really focusing on family reunification and connection with children who happen to have parents who are incarcerated, was an important aspect of what we needed to focus in on next. So really, what we see in this comprehensive reentry plan is an opportunity to learn from... So, really what we see in this comprehensive reentry plan is an opportunity to learn from our lessons, to try to apply what we've learned about the people we've serviced so far and project out what are going to be best practices moving forward. There are really three clear phases to this system. It's the getting ready to go home, it's the going home and the staying home. In the getting ready process, which is Phase One, which begins in custody, the Sheriff's Office and Correctional Health will provide a safety, security and health assessment to determine appropriate housing and program needs. There will be discussion and looking at reentry risk and needs assessments, which are specifically designed from evidence-based modality to work with people who are reentering into the community. There will be case management that's tailored towards reentry and coordinated with relevant partners to participate in the reentry process. And most importantly, there will be a warm handoff for Service Connect and probation. The next two phases, Second and Third, will begin outside of custody and that's where we really see the services move into effect. Whether it be from helping people get a job to connecting with emergency services to looking for housing supports, that's really where the staying home process really will be engaged. Now, this chart that you see here is an outstanding effort to try and really put down all the various steps that exist here. And so, rather than make your head hurt and try to walk you through it, the one thing that I do want to point out, which I think we're very proud of, is that if you get to the end of the process, we're really focused on making sure that even those who don't want to participate in the program have access to services. And I think that's one of the key components of this program, is that we certainly want people to participate voluntarily and to allow themselves to be connected with all of the case management and the folks who are here to help them. But those who don't, we certainly still want to make sure they get offered opportunities for resources so they have an opportunity to succeed, even if they succeed without our assistance. So, once again, to recap, the key components we have is evidence-based supervision and case management. There's a multidisciplinary team approach. There's coordinated communication. There's a focus on unduplicated resources and services. And it's building on our previous experiences and success. And lastly, which is important to this board, is the ability to track and monitor results. I think as we heard in two presentations previously, really the idea and the focus of being able to see if what we are actually doing works is going to be critical long-term for not only for the success of the programs, but the success of those individuals that we put in those programs. So, the fiscal impact, there's a budget of $1.8 million. That equates to 9.2 county FTEs. Only five new positions will be in that. Forty-four percent of the overall operating budget will be directed towards services. And as we saw in the original Achieve 180 model, we had serviced 150 people at a per-client cost of a little over $9,600. The new unified reentry program will be 200 people who are non-AB 109 related. But we also will include the existing AB 109 population, which will increase the number of people we hope to service between 430 and 450 people. And the cost per client has gone down to a little bit over $9,000. So, here's the probation department's budget slide. We're actually only adding one additional person. And the primary reason why we're doing that is to continue to reduce caseload sizes. All the evidence shows that the smaller caseloads, the more ability and more time you have to ensure that coordination is happening and that you are able to connect your clients with resources as quickly as possible. And so, we certainly are dedicating a person, an additional person to that effort. We also will be using our management analysts to make sure that we can start to capture data. So, once again, we can hold not only ourselves accountable, but work more efficiently with the people that we work with in the community as well as our systems partners. So, as we go on to the next few slides, I would like to take a moment to bring us one of our partners who may want to add a few clarifying points to their slides. First up, we have the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, good morning. Tom Gallagher, Assistant Sheriff with the Sheriff's Office. Just wanted to go over a couple of things with the budget quickly. These are not necessarily new positions, but continuity from the previous funding. And the key component for that legal office specialist is going to be to support our strategic implementation plan, which you've heard much about previously. It's exciting for us that the inmates will get contact with us within the first seven days and get on the right path and move us through the entire program and bolster the whole collaboration with this group. The extra help person there, the data technician, is going to be exactly what Chief Keen just reported. We've got to keep track of what we're doing there and make sure that we're keeping everything on the right track and that our programs are working appropriately. That's all the other stuff, the operating costs, we'll be able to handle within our current budget and our means. And is there any questions on our specific portion? Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have Correctional Health.
Hello. As Chief Keen described, the reentry process starts with getting ready while people are still in jail. And that process is really anchored in the partnership between the Sheriff's Office and Correctional Health Services. Correctional Health's role, in addition to screening everyone for medical, alcohol and drug and mental health needs and assessing them, is to provide the treatment while people are in jail. And then also to work very closely to provide the warm handoff to Service Connect on the outside. And part of that includes assuring that people leave with medications in hand, assuring that Service Connect has all the information they need about the inmate and their needs. And Service Connect then follows through. So, this involves the addition of one clinical position. And the role of that person is basically to be a discharge planner for the expanded population.
Before you go, can I just ask, are you releasing people at a specific time? You're not releasing them in the middle of the night?
I believe at this point, the Sheriff's Office, do you guys want to speak to that? I think that they're not being released in the middle of the night and that we're working closely with them to coordinate that, but I don't know that.
We are not releasing in the middle of the night. Of course, if somebody has an ability to leave and we can get them to a specific program...
Well, I understand if they're bailed out, but if you're going to do a warm handoff, you'd better not release them in the middle of the night.
No, but we have discussed that if there is some type of program that would require that, we're certainly going to assist them in being released at that period of time.
Thanks, Assistant Sheriff Gallagher.
Are there other questions?
Attorney General Haveri Helfes. Again, thanks Board. Before I comment specifically, I just want to take this opportunity with Achieve 180 having sunsetted to thank the Board and the County Manager for your support, both financially through the four years of the project, but probably more importantly, your interest in the program. You not only were interested, but you actually showed up when asked to recognize people that were doing well. And that had a tremendous impact on the clients. So, I really appreciate all of your support for Achieve 180. Our Behavioral Health budget is really carrying over what we had funded in Achieve 180. The two positions at the top, the psych, social and the assessor case manager, those were functions, case management functions that had been contracted out under Achieve 180. And with our partners, we felt that to achieve some of the things that Chief Keen discussed around coordinated care and communication, et cetera, it was better to bring those case management functions inside, internal to the county and build upon the case management capability we already had in Service Connect. So, the Service Connect team now will have these additional positions. A new position is the Point Two Psychiatry position. And that's really to try to do a better job of addressing the mental health needs of the population, which was a gap in both Achieve 180 and I think we're seeing the need in the Service Connect. All of the other services below there are all our contracted out services. And essentially, those are all carryover numbers from what we were funding for community-based treatment for the providers. So, the only real new position to the effort is the Point Two Psychiatry. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Human Services.
Hi, I'm John Joy, Director of SMC, works for the Human Services Agency. And essentially, the pieces of the Human Services Agency budget that are here are pieces that are assuming some of the responsibilities that the community-based organizations did previously under the Achieve 180 program. And also taking on some additional work in terms of, you see, one is a vocational rehabilitation counselor. And one of the things that the vocational rehabilitation counselor does is work with the client to get them from post-release to job-ready. So, they do vocational assessments. They, we actually, in 550 jobs, we actually put people to work. And so, we're getting feedback on a regular basis on their job readiness and working. The vocational counselor works with them on behaviors that may not be appropriate for the job or help them work out issues that they may have with their vocational readiness. And then the community worker assists in a lot of the activities that go on, the sort of the pro-social activities that we carry on through Service Connect to get people connected back to the community in a positive way and particularly connected with their families in a positive way. Because coming back from that environment, there's often a lot of issues that they have to work through. And what we want to do is provide activities and an environment for them to be able to make that connection as positively and smoothly as possible. So, and then the other, the client needs and services are really the emergency needs that we work with clients around. If they need transportation, if they need food, if they need clothing and if they need shelter, those are the immediate needs that we want to meet right up front. And then through those immediate needs and meeting those immediate needs, then we can engage them in more long-term activities and more long-term groups and other supports that we have available for them through Service Connect. So, and I would like to say that it's been an absolute pleasure to work with this team over the last year or so, as we began to put together the various pieces of what's going to happen when Achieve 180 goes away and then how does that relate to what's already going on in Service Connect. And I have to say that when I go around the state and talk to my counterparts in other parts of the state, nobody has what we have here in terms of this kind of a partnership and the working relationships that are between criminal justice, between probation, between the Sheriff's Department, all the various elements that we have, behavioral health. People just want to have some of that magic sauce that we have. And it's one of the things that distinguishes this county from others, I think. Thank you.
So, before we take any other specific questions, there's a few points I would like to make. I would certainly like to echo John's statement with regard to the fact we truly are the envy of other counties in the state with regard to this issue. Not only from a collaborative perspective, but from a visionary perspective. We really want to take an opportunity to thank the Board again for not only your visionary leadership, but your support for each of our departments as we ventured into this arena. We truly are fortunate to have opportunity to work with such an informed Board who cares about the issues, but really it's more than just lip service. So, thank you all very much for that. And lastly, as we talk about the realigning and alignment of goals here in the county, I just wanted to emphasize that I believe that when you look at this plan, it matches many of the goals of our shared vision. Whether it's healthy communities or prosperous communities or collaborative communities. And I could even argue that I feel like we reach in some levels an environmentally conscious aspect of it as well. But I think it really highlights the fact that not only is the collaboration strong and meaningful, but it is strongly connected to our overall long-term vision here in San Mateo County. So, with that, I'll see if there's any specific questions you may have.
Questions?
I don't know that I have a specific question, but I would like to say what I really appreciate in our county, just as you do, is that whole concept of the multidisciplinary team. Because every individual that comes through has multiple issues going on. It's just not one or the other and they're not, we're not siloing these individuals or these entities either now. We make sure that everybody gets a chance to see if there's some area that they can be helpful with that particular client. And I think the other thing that's going to be very valuable, and we talk about this all the time in our CCP and in our Criminal Justice Working Group, is having the data to be able to see, how are we doing? You know, are we really helping these people? And if we are, great, let's continue to do what we do. If we're not, let's go back and take a look at what's wrong, where the gaps in service are. And the other part that I think is really great is that soon, you know, we'll be testing this, even though Achieve 180, I believe, was very successful, this plays on that. But also it gives us an opportunity, when the new facility opens, we'll have better space for programming, better areas for these teams to work and greater programming in general that we can provide. And hopefully, by the time that opens, we'll be able to see what some of these successes are and, you know, expand them to greater numbers or change them if they're not working. So, I do appreciate all of the team's effort. It's been a tremendous, tremendous road that you've, and time and effort that you've put in, so thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent. Are there questions? I had a couple.
I do have a question.
No, go ahead, I'll let you go.
I always thought the classic definition of recidivism measuring is usually about three years. Could be wrong, but isn't, do we have any capacity for long-term studies of the people that we've provided these services for? Are we only doing a one-year checkback?
Well, I think that's, as Supervisor Tissier referenced, I think that's really one of the kind of key long-term perspectives that this will provide for us. Because we have the fortunate benefit of doing this type of planning at the same time when we're upgrading all of our county criminal justice partners' computer systems. And so, as we start to look, we'll be able to have more of a longitudinal look at individual clients. And one of the things that I'm really passionate about is as we start to reopen and open up this conversation of reentry, at some point, I want to include juveniles as well. Because I think we then get a true look at an individual. One of the mistakes, I think, oftentimes from data collection, from the criminal justice perspective, is that we only look at people as either juveniles or adults. But we need to look at them as people if we really want to start to apply true evidence-based kind of decision-making to that. So, the classic definition does include three years. But really, the fact is, you still have five or six different debates out there with which one to go with. The three-year number only came from the fact that, for the most part, three years is about the average for how long people are placed on probation in the state of California. There are places where, for example, on my former county in Alameda, where people consistently got five years of probation. But a lot of the science, once again, as we start to bring new information to this, the science clearly shows that most people, if they haven't recidivated by their third year, they're not going to recidivate. And so, a lot of challenges then become with systems. How much do you want to spend money and investing in probation for five, six, seven and sometimes longer periods of time when most of the recidivism numbers, from the very basic definition of going out and committing a new offense, that doesn't happen beyond the third year? So, that's where that number three kind of gets out there. But I think one of the things we're doing that's really creative here, and you'll hear more about it after this month's CCP meeting, the DA, the sheriff and I have been able to work collaboratively on what we're going to use as our San Mateo definition of recidivism. And so, that's going to be arrests and convictions, arrests and charges filed within three years of last incarceration date. And we feel like that's going to give us a starting point. It by no means is the magic, you know, elixir, so to speak. But at least it gives us a starting point for us to start to collect data. Because we've been waiting and waiting for the state to give us a definition that will eventually be used for funding purposes, but we're not there yet.
Okay. And how successful are we at finding jobs? Is there a percentage that you have?
John?
So, through the 550 Jobs Program, our biggest challenge in terms of getting people into jobs has been getting them engaged and actually showing up and working with us. So, we actually did a little bit of a study of our own. And as it worked out, we had about a year of AB 109 under our belts in terms of experience before we started a program called 550 Jobs, which actually provided a more robust engagement and actual subsidized employment for people coming up through the AB 109 program. So, prior to 550 Jobs, we had a 27% show-up rate of people actually coming and engaging in vocational activities and getting, but we had a 60% placement rate of those, which ended up being 17 people. So, post-550 Jobs, in that first year afterwards, we had a 93% show-up rate after we started the 550 Jobs program. And again, maintained about a 62% placement rate, but that ended up being... that ended up being 60 people. So quite a difference in numbers of people. The key is getting them engaged. So we have the tools, we have the mechanisms, we have, and I think an important piece of it is the relationships with employers who will actually hire people and know that when we send them somebody, it's somebody that we think will be successful at the job. So we're very successful doing that. It's getting the people in the door, and 550 Jobs has really been the key to the success around that.
Yeah, I just would be interested in seeing how successful we are in the future with this, with that. I think that's really a critical part.
Yeah, we set a goal for ourselves for 65% in the next year, so we'll see how we do on that.
Thanks, John.
Thank you, President Pine. Chief, a couple of things. One, congratulations on the cross-boundary team, and oftentimes, government tends to work in silos, and it's, I think, a credit to San Mateo County and all the members that are behind you there that had a hand at creating this new program. I wanted to ask you a question, and I think, is Chris Flatmo here? I don't know. No. But you talked about data and data capture, and there was a position. I'm curious about the systems that are in place, or will be in place, that are going to help us capture the data as it probably flows from one entity and organization to the other. Does that exist today, or is that coming, something you're working on?
Well, I think there are phases or aspects of that. We do have some ability now to collect data. As we look to move towards our new criminal justice systems, each of those will give us capabilities to do more than what we're doing now. We will be able to have access or portals for certain folks to be able to put information in, so our community-based organizations. Where are we on Social Solutions? So Social Solutions currently is up and running. The Sheriff's Department is currently putting data into Social Solutions. One of the interesting aspects about it is that we've realized that probably the management aspect of it, to make sure it's run efficiently, we may need to farm that out to actual a vendor who actually, you know, does that type of work in terms of building it and building the reports that we need. But it really is exactly what you're speaking of, an opportunity for vendors to have a space to put information in. But the long-term goal is, particularly here in probation, will be for us to have, for example, a portal, that'll be a service portal. And so when John goes to show up, they just simply go to the portals, say, "John showed up today." And so it's efficient, it's a way for us to know what's going on, and it's an easier way for us to track just the very basic elements initially of success. Did he show up? I think John, I think Mr. Joy made a great point, is oftentimes, it's just getting people to show up. And that's why, as we talk about the learning from some of our, some of the lessons from the previous program, improving that warm handoff is going to be critical. So certainly, we have something in play now, it's just a starting point of it, but we will have much more robust systems in the not-too-distant future.
Thank you for that answer. And just one last thing, Mr. President. Chief, could you just talk for a little bit, for my own education and purpose, a little bit about the family reunification and support services from the chart, and what that might involve, and what that sort of looks like?
So I'm going to talk from my perspective, and please, my partners from the Sheriff's Office, if you want to chime in. One of the things that we're looking for is that we certainly recognize that the idea is to get our clients, our offenders, back into the community. One of the most significant challenges that they face is connecting back with their family. And that's even a larger challenge with their children involved. And so the goal and the thought pattern around the planning of this was, how do we figure out a way to build a strength in the family? All the evidence-based work shows that if you can, you know, look at it from a strength-based approach, rather than looking at weaknesses, you have a much greater chance of succeeding. So we're looking at, how do we build this from a strength base? And there are probably fewer things you can think of that can help support a person who's struggling more than family. And so whether that will include visits, or opportunities for them to connect with their loved ones while they're still in custody, getting counseling along the way while they're doing that, because you can't just simply pop up and say, "Hey, I'm home," and be accepted by the family. And also, too, for us in probation, one of the things that we will be working on internally will be a focus on working with children of incarcerated parents. That's a whole separate discussion point by itself. And so since we have the opportunity to work collaboratively with the Sheriff's Office, we know that we're going to be able to connect those dots on that issue. So that's really the focus, and please, team, did I miss anything that you guys want to add? Okay, John? So you get, you know, it's John and John, so it's kind of like you just kind of put it from one place to another.
Yeah, looking around the CCP meeting the other, last week, I think there were five Johns sitting around the table out of 13 people. That's kind of scary. So other things that happened in terms of Service Connect, in terms of the engagement with the individual, and how to, and how to help them engage with their family and come back in a positive way. We have a lot of support groups that happen on a regular basis that people take advantage of. Peer mentorship is an important piece of it, because oftentimes, they will listen to somebody who's kind of walked in their shoes before and found out that there are things that work for them and things that didn't work for them. So peer mentorship, I think, is a key piece of it. Collaborating with Children and Family Services, if there's any issues that are going on there between that individual and their family, if they're known to Children and Family Services, and we want to be sure that we're working with them on any issues going on. One of the important things, I think, is the monthly events that we have. So we want to do what's called pro-social behavior, so, or allow them to engage with their family in a positive way. So we do things like bowling, movie nights. We've had, we work with the Fatherhood Collaborative a lot in terms of their events and the things that we have our people involved in, barbecues, just a way that they can engage with their family in a positive way, and we try to create as many opportunities for that as possible. And then, of course, there's the county fair, and activities that can go on there, and, you know, just taking your kids to the fair or going to the fair with your family has always been one of those sort of traditional, positive things that you can do. And then, of course, just counseling with the individual, sort of one-on-one and in groups.
Thank you.
And just also to add, I think this is one of the key components as to why I think it's critical that we continue to look at reentry from a much more global perspective. Why, eventually, I would love to see us also look at juvenile reentry as well. Many of these families have both young people in the system, as well as parents in the system simultaneously. And so if we can better use the limited resources we have by doing more family engagement and controlled ways or engagements that we can direct through already our current programming processes, once again, I think here we are, we have the ability to work with families as a whole, opposed to kind of the fragmented approach that we take now.
A couple of questions. First, I echo everyone's thanks and everyone coming together to work on this reentry program. I mean, it seems to me it's one of the hardest things we do in the county. You think about an individual in jail, you know, he is likely, has a substance abuse problem and/or a mental health problem, probably doesn't have a lot of education, probably doesn't come from a very strong family background. And as I understand it, in this program, we're really focusing on the folks with this, the high risks of recidivism. So, you know, this is a demanding population, and so the only way we're going to make a way is through this collaborative effort, so it's really good to see it. In terms of the target population, you know, it is this high-to-moderate risk group, and I think there's a 200. I mean, does that cover the entire high-to-moderate category, or are we, you know, having to pick 200 out of 300?
Well, generally speaking, that 200, it could be 200 of, maybe an additional, you could have maybe additional, maybe 100 or more that don't fit the category, but you also have to understand that's part of, the risk level is just the beginning in the assessment of who's ready for services. So you may be moderate to high in your risk level, but you may have responsiveness issues or individual characteristics that may not put you at a position where you're ready to be into a program. A lot of that will wash itself out in those people who choose to be, you know, part of the program and who chooses not to be. There's also that assessment from the perspective of who's in custody, and how they, and how they monitor risk or determine risk for, I guess, detention-specific reasons versus when we bring them out, when we're looking at recidivism to reoffend. So the fact is, that 200 is going to be 200 of people who are choosing, who are ready, who have the responsiveness factors, and then also, too, that their needs marry up with what we have available in the community. So case planning is probably more likely going to identify three to four individual needs for each person, and maybe even more, but ideally, you don't want to try to do more than three or four at a time. That will then facilitate what that number looks like. So a large part of the message in this plan is to talk about truly the readiness of individuals, and that really speaks more to the individual nature of case management in the future. In the past, we just kind of dumped everybody and said, "Everyone goes to drug counseling, don't care if you're ready or not." And then we wonder why people don't succeed.
Right, I was trying to get, I guess, with my question was, you know, is there, are we able to serve, is there group people we aren't able to serve with, under the program? I mean, in terms of people who are ready, who fit the criteria, who, you know, meet the eligibility?
Well, our goal is to come back to you later and say, "We're doing so well that, you know, there are more people out there for the service." But we truly believe that this is the accurate number of who we can serve that's here.
Okay. And I also had a question about, you know, signing up for the ACA benefits for the folks that are doing, you know, reentry. Could you speak to how we are approaching that? Because I, is, you know, there's been a lot in the literature about how that provides a great opportunity for getting people into healthcare, which is so important.
And so my stunt double John will step in again for me.
So we actually have a benefit analyst who sits at Service Connect and really screens anybody who comes through the door for all of the benefit programs that we have, including the Affordable Care Act. So we want to make sure that anything that we can do to provide support to that individual is available to them. So we have the immediate need stuff, but once we get past the immediate needs, then the next piece of that process is to actually go through an eligibility process with that person in terms of, are they eligible for food stamps, are they, you know, eligible for other programs, are they eligible for any kind of medical insurance? So that's all part of the process that we do right up front when we first engage with them.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be great if we could track, you know, particularly with the ACA benefit. I mean, it's just such an important benefit, and we have this kind of discrete period of time where we can try to get them signed up.
Right. We are tracking that at this point in time, how many, how many people we screen for benefits, and then how many are actually eligible. There are some barriers to eligibility. For example, with food stamps, people with certain drug felony convictions are not eligible. So that's...
Amazing.
Yeah.
That has to change someday. And then finally, this question on the budget, you know, we have the 1.8 million, and it was mentioned that five of the 9.2 FTEs are new positions, so I guess 4.2 are existing positions. So is it 1.8 million of new dollars, or is it kind of, some of that captures the four existing positions that are presumably in the budget already?
The total appropriation for next year that we're going to be requesting is 1.8 million. Now, some of it's in the budget, but it will be for next year, so it would have to be re-appropriated anyhow. So it's one, this program as a whole is 1.8 million. Some of it is money that's being spent this year.
In other words, if we weren't doing the program...
It would be less.
But there'd be, some of it would be 4.2 positions anyway, it would be.
Right, right.
And then, I don't know if we're going to hear from Michael Brownrigg, but the social bonds will someday potentially connect here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, unless there's other questions, I think...
I'll move approval of the funding of 1.8 million plus.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thanks for your patience waiting today.
No, thank you very much for having us. We really appreciate it.
Okay, as our stomachs corral, we can move to County Manager. You have your state budget and your County Manager report.
Mr. President, members of board, in interest of the hour, I'll just simply say, on the state budget, the legislative analyst is estimating that the year-end revenues for the state will be $2 billion higher than the governor's estimate, not a great surprise given the economy. And so that obviously will put into place this month, I think, a series of proposals from the legislature as to how those additional funds could be spent. Chief, among those, I fully expect will be Senator Steinberg's bill for your old preschool. From the county standpoint, although there's some slight variations, the effect on our revenues is about as anticipated, a couple hundred thousand dollars more here, a couple hundred thousand dollars less there, but pretty much as anticipated. So we don't see at this point in time any great variation from our budget. And then, just in terms of my report, I just wanted to call out the fact that the County Manager's Office and the county have received the award from the Government Finance Officers' Association again as to the Budget Presentation Award, and congratulate the board for your efforts in developing and working on a two-year budget, and the recognition from national organization, once again, that our budget presentation is one of the best in the country. Also, to bring to the board's attention, a number of command changes in the Sheriff's Department, and it's included in my report, and congratulations to those new officers that have been promoted to new positions in the county. The veterans' need assessment, we have an RFP on the street that will provide us very valuable information when we have the veterans convening this fall, as to where the gaps and overlaps in our service are, so we can ensure that all of the veterans in this county receive timely and complete services that they are entitled to and earned during their service to our country. And we've also, to call out the fact that the County Manager's Office is hiring, has hired John Ridner as the county's new Open Data Community Liaison, and we're in the final stages of hiring a social media coordinator to manage social media information with the community. Finally, a note that the Information Services Department has received the Public Technologies Institute's award for 2014, for Solutions Award for Public Safety, as to our interoperability radio communications project, and congratulations to John Walton and the entire ISD staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mumpie. Mr. Fox, I apologize. I overlooked your card on wanting to speak about the comprehensive reentry system. Would you like to speak on that?
In the interest of the hour, there is a measure of AOT, program completion, in the performance measures, in the excellent system that they put together. But there is also no measure of mental health treatment completion. And when you consider the fact that co-occurring disorders and AOT occur simultaneously in many respects, it's only looking at one side of the picture. I'd ask you to add a performance measure that includes mental health treatment completion. Thank you.
Thank you. Then, Board Member reports. Mr. Ursley?
No report.
I was going to ask us to adjourn in memory of Maya Angelou, who, a great American poet, who spent a lot of time in Northern California and spent a lot of time in, actually, San Mateo County. And because it's Election Day, I was going to read something from On the Pulse of Morning, but I don't think I will because of the lateness of the day. But this is a wonderful little book that includes Miss Angelou's poetry for the Bill Clinton inauguration in 1992.
Yeah, could I look at that again? Thank you. I do not have a report today. Supervisor Tissier?
Yes, I have a couple of, sorry about that. I have a couple adjourned memories. The first one is John Vasconcelles, who was a legislator for 38 years. He spanned from the Ronald Reagan era to the Arnold Schwarzenegger era. He was known as a tough state budget wonk, who chaired the Assembly Ways and Means Committee, and as a new age liberal, whose task force in 1986 promoted self-esteem and personal and social responsibility. He passed away at the age of 82, and our sympathies go out to his family. I also would like to adjourn in memory of Jim Gallagher. He was a gifted newspaperman, whose skill at building relationships was enormously influential at the establishment and flowering at the peninsula's public transportation system. He died recently at home in Redwood City. He died recently at home in Redwood City. He was 83, and he passed away of leukemia. He grew up on the Monterey Peninsula and spent 20 years working for daily newspapers, including the Redwood City Tribune. He also would be sorely missed by our community. And my last adjournment memory is Gus Samoyah. He was an active member of the Daly City and San Mateo County community. He owned Par Auto Body on Mission Street in Daly City. And he was so proud because he recently became a green consultant. He had also been very involved in community chambers of commerce, including our Daly City Chamber and the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. And he was named the Business Owner of the Year by the San Mateo County Hispanic Chamber of Commerce. He also served on the Skyline Presidents' Council, and he too was a huge Giants fan. And he leaves behind his three adult children. So, our sympathies go out to Mr. Samoyah.
Thank you. Just very quickly, last Saturday, we had the North Fair Oaks Be Seen and Keeping it Clean event. There were 125 volunteers that came out. We collected five tons of garbage. And thank you to El Paisano, who donated some 300 burritos to feed the crowd that were there. We had a few burritos left over. Since there were 125 people there, you can do the math. But everybody took some food home. I think we gave some to St. Anthony's. I'm not sure. But it was really a successful day, and it was really special to see the kids out there walking the streets with the garbage bags and picking up things. It was a really fun event. And then, finally, speaking about poetry, there's the Running of the Poets event at the San Mateo County Fair, Saturday, June 7th, and again, on Saturday, June 14th. There'll be seven poet laureates from San Mateo and the Bay Area coming to do poetry. And I just would say that this was all organized, basically, the idea for the name, Running of the Poets. And the event was planned by our poet laureate, Carolyn Goodwin. So, our hats off to her for the work that she's doing.
Clever. All right, we're going to adjourn to a closed session.
The board met in closed session to consider one matter, initiation of litigation pursuant to Government Code, Section 549, 56.9, one matter. And the board...